Some cross ventilation.
Great.
So nice to see you all this evening.
Yeah, same.
Feel weird next Tuesday evening. Race home for.
I know, what are we gonna do?
We're like, what are we supposed to do?
To all eat for dinner or something.
I'll show up. Yeah. Uh, yeah, so we got quite the agenda tonight, uh, a lot of information coming at us and hopefully a lot of decisions made, good decisions, so.
We don't know what we're doing.
Joe, you ready to to roll?
Yeah, I think so.
Alright, so first up, uh, we have our finance advisory chair to go over the quarterly review. Thanks for coming in, Joe.
Okay, all set?
Yep.
Alright, so, uh, this follows a very similar, uh, process we did the last few few quarters. Right now, we've, uh, we've spent as of the end of March, we've spent seven hundred eighty one thousand dollars, roughly seven eighty two. Uh, if we extrapolate that, that goes out to three point one million dollars, uh, and we're on track for about fifty seven thousand dollars excess. Now, keep in mind that we, uh, don't normally spend twenty five percent in the first quarter. So although it looks promising that we're gonna have fifty seven thousand dollar surplus, we're probably gonna pick up the spending throughout the rest of the year, so keep that in mind. When we went through the data as of March thirty first, uh, there were thirteen accounts that were overspent. Working with Mindy, uh, Mindy's doing great, she she went through this on her on her own as well, identified a number of of issues that were charged the wrong account, corrected those. Uh, we identified a few more, uh, right now we've made nine, uh, corrections, uh, and where there's one that we're still working on, one that we're still checking, but, uh, all good there.
Okay.
We've got forty five that are, well, we had forty five that are that are spending more than twenty five percent. And we've made corrections for the nine of those, and, uh, two of those are are being looked at right now, but, uh, we'll go into a little bit more detail later.
Can I can I just, so some of those, we have like one time, once a year fees that we pay, so it looks like a hundred percent is spent because a hundred percent is spent and that's not gonna have any added to it before the end of the year, so some of those could be that.
Right, and that that's not reflected in in these.
Oh.
So we've gone through, uh, we've gone through the annual expenses, um, the ones that are seasonal expenses, we've identified those, and we pretty much disregarded those for our summary.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
So what we're gonna do is we'll wa- we'll walk through a just a few slides, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, but, um, you'll see what we identified and keep in mind that we've already made some improvements, some some updates after this, so because it's it's, uh, Q one, I didn't wanna modify it with with Q two data to reflect that, so we'll just talk through that.
Okay.
So this is through March thirty first?
Yes, yep. So here's a snapshot by department. Board of Selectmen, Moderator, Elections. It's a quick snapshot of these on this slide here, nobody's, uh, actually a problem. Uh, Legal is is twenty seven percent right now, so we'll have to keep an eye on that, we did expect that to be fluctuating, so. Okay, on the next slide, we've got, uh, uh, you can you can see this percent column, uh, Insurances, Annual Expenses, we spent a hundred percent. Fire, we're at forty one percent, we believe that's because of the payout of the stipends at this point, so we don't we don't pay out on a quarterly basis, we either we're at the annual or S M A annual basis, oops.
No, like quarterly. Most th- there's hourly that are monthly, and then there's stipends that are quarterly on fire.
Hmm, well.
To my knowledge.
It was a pretty big chunk, so I'll go back and verify that. Uh, D P W, uh, there was some seasonal bunches in there as well, so I don't think there's a big concern there. And then the the last few departments, everything looks looks real good at this point. So these are some of the ones that were were overspent. Elections, uh, we did some some equipment maintenance, uh, came in higher than we expected, were a few hundred bucks over over the prediction, so we'll have to make sure we keep keep a close eye on that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So there's four elections this year, and I'm pretty sure, so every time you have an election, we've we charge it to maintenance, but we have to send that card back to L H S so they can program it for the next ballot. So when we have the state ones, so there's two more this year that, so that's probably gonna be over then.
So there's two, um, budgets for elections equipment, one is in the Town Clerk because Lisa takes care of it, and one is the maintenance one that, um, Brenda takes care of. Are you referring to the one that Lisa takes care of?
Yes.
Okay, good, that's different.
This is election, okay, 'cause some part of it, there's something under hers that says election, I thought.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, nevermind, I'll shut my mouth, I'm not saying anything.
That that's okay, nope, all good. Uh, you know, you can see a couple, uh, Legal and and Zoning Board, we had some some, uh, charges applied to those, we've actually closed those accounts or we zeroed those out this year, we're moving everything, I'm sorry, we zeroed out the general fund that was in the Board of Selectmen budget, we put that into zoning and into into, uh, Planning Board. Uh, by plan, we did that, um, Mindy actually pushed those off to that fund that we did to the account that we didn't wanna use, so she since transferred that that back to the zoning board and to this, uh, planning board, like we discussed in before, so that's all good. Uh, we had a couple of postage ones reimbursed, uh, reimburse expenses, no problem at all. You can see another another, uh, pool corrected. Uh, Propane, uh, Communications, we we moved, that was a big one, uh, we put the twenty six thousand dollar Dispatch Services into the wrong account, uh, so Mindy Mindy caught that, corrected that. Um, you know, so really, we look look at this and there are pretty much all corrections.
So this propane, it's moved to D P W, is that a part of that
Hmm.
D P W report on the previous page you showed us?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so it was an area that we had identified overspent, it was D P W, but it has been corrected, so there was thirteen overspent, this was one of them.
And we didn't pay for I Works this year. They didn't want our money.
We didn't pay who?
Hmm? I Works. Building permit software.
Why didn't they want our money?
It's a big long story. 'Cause we were switch-
Make it short.
Because we were switching to another company and they would not do anything to help us with that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So there was a charge in B P O Computer Support, or there was a charge for I Work, but I'm not sure the details of it.
So. Yeah.
It went to, it was written out to I Works?
That shouldn't have been paid.
Yes.
That should not have been paid, I Work.
I can, uh, I'll write that down, and we'll look at that in a minute then.
Cool.
Okay, uh, did he, those are all good. Okay, so that that pretty much summarizes where we're overspent. This next slide here. This is taken from the, uh, B S M A system directly, uh, no custom report, no filtering, no nothing at all, I went in there and I pulled this and it comes up this way, so in a matter of a couple of steps, we can get a snapshot of where each department is.
That is amazing.
Yeah, that is pretty neat, so if you're concerned about a particular department, uh, you could you can scan quickly, like Insurance is a hundred percent and you you see that hundred percent, we've already spent our money for the year, it's only it's only May, uh, you look at it and you say Insurance is, and you can find out quickly is that an annual expense and and are we gonna have any surprises? Uh, Fire, as I said, right now we're at forty seven percent, I believe that was because we paid out a number of stipends, we'll have to look at that some, you know, further.
Yeah.
But these are just quick snapshots from the tool.
That is pretty cool, slick is, I believe, the word you used.
Yeah. Slick, yeah, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah. I know that was a lot of data in just a matter of a few minutes, so if you have any questions, I'll.
Are the shop posts, uh, secret projects now labeled?
Yeah, they're they're not, yeah, so the, for some reason, and I haven't figured this out yet, the D P W has a number of accounts, four, three, one, two dot one, uh, which which is the the main, um, the salary and so forth, and then there's a dot two, three, four, and five, which which I don't really know what that means, and then there's a dot nine, which has even even more, uh, expenses in there, I'm not sure why it was broken up that way.
Yeah, 'cause there's weird stuff under that, like when I printed out from, um, B M S I. It was like, it's always been zero, why do we even, why don't we just do it?
Yeah, why is it there?
Yeah.
Right.
And and we we left dollars in there, um, in the budget, one dollar for two dot two, for example, so it it's an active account right now, whether we ever gonna plan on using it or not, it is an active account, so.
Right.
Hmm.
So what is this? Four, three, one, two, five?
Ooh.
On the last page, is it on the last one or?
Yeah.
No, it's there.
Well, we can look at that too.
No, it's there.
Fifty seven percent.
Hundred and two thousand dollars for a budget.
Is that the transfer station or?
No, that's below.
No, it's D P W.
Oh, I wonder is that block grant?
Hmm.
Okay.
That's that's just that hundred and two thousand.
That's uh, there's there's no description of it, yeah.
Sounds.
So I I wrote that down, we can, uh, we can actually spend a few minutes and dig into, um, I Work and, uh, this account here. We'll look at it, look at it in the B S M A system in a few minutes and see what they actually are.
Okay.
Nice, this is, I think it says something that there's not many questions.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think it does.
I think it does.
Good.
Yeah.
It's pretty cool.
So, uh, you know, we we've spent a good amount of time going through this ahead of time, so we weeded out a lot of issues and and Mindy has identified more than half of them herself, said, oh, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong, so she's made those corrections on her own, so I think we're moving in the right direction. It did reach out to, uh, Mike and Matt, and currently they take their invoices and send them to Mindy, so, uh, I've got to set up some time with Mindy just to go through the process, and we'll try to
Yeah.
build some training slides as to how to enter invoices and so forth, but.
Yeah. Yeah. And she just got a bunch today that have already been paid. Like, why are you submitting, not from either one of them, but
Yeah.
you know, like, we need to, we need to have a streamlined process, you need to keep records for your department type thing, but that's not budget, so go ahead.
Yeah.
Sorry, I said I was gonna keep my mouth shut, and I don't.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Welcome to the club.
So it's okay with you, I'll move on, I'll I'll open up the B S M A system.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Love it.
This is a town's new, uh,
Accounting software.
Nice, yeah. I don't think I've ever talked about it.
Oops.
Cap lock is on. I just wanna know what the eligibility season is gonna be calling.
I think we're gonna hit, uh, he's gonna be us through some of that stuff, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay, so let's go through this page here. It's got the, uh, block block on it, okay, so uh, what I'll do is, uh, is is I'll try to walk through this slowly so you can follow as well, um, on on this page, and feel free to, you know, stop me and take some notes. But where we are right now is is a dashboard. I think all of our dashboards are the same, I can't be sure, um, you can customize dashboards, but and because I'm, I've got, uh, read-only privileges, I think you guys will have read-only privileges as well, I think we'll have the same dashboard, if you don't have the same dashboard, hopefully the words are the same.
Okay.
So the global shared dashboard is everyone that logs in in the, then like, I can switch mine, 'cause I created my own dashboard, to the reports that I use all the time and you can put whatever blocks you want on there, if you want notifications or activities or other things, um, you can make your own dashboard, so I made my own.
Nice.
With their help.
Okay, so one of the things that that's handy is if you just want a snapshot of of where we are, um, you can, you know, yeah, a detailed snapshot of where we are, you can you can run a report, so if you wanna run a report, if you look over here on the left-hand side, it says, um, let's see, I'm gonna go to Reports, so select Reports. It's gonna come up a list of a whole bunch of supports, the reports, now uh, the Created By User is a really cool column, because there's a whole bunch of of system reports in there, uh, but but, uh, Debbie created one here, which is a nice report to use, uh, and I created one as well, so I'm looking for the Finance Chair. And I'll see, let's see where's, there we go, this one, Finance Chair, okay, so I'm gonna, uh, pick that report, um, and I'm gonna double-click it. Okay, now this just says Run Report, we could actually go to Run Report, I'm gonna do that, Run Report. Select Module, we'll go General Ledger. Uh, the General Ledger is the whole budget for the whole town, whole, our our whole budget.
You should just be able to double-click on that one and it would open it.
You can, yeah.
Oh, instead of doing what you're doing.
Yeah, I'm just walking through the steps, yeah, 'cause I'll double-click on it and it that it that it'll not.
To change it. Oh. Gotcha.
So category, uh, General Ledger Reports, so we go down here, we pick General Ledger Reports, and then the report we wanna select is the Finance Advisory, and it's right there.
So is that, um, your report that you customized, is that available to everybody now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
So and then over on the right, you can see that he, the last time he ran that report was Monday, April twenty ninth.
Yeah. So I'm gonna, uh, click Edit Report Options, now you can just, um, run this, but I but I wanna customize it, so we'll go through that customizing spot. Moving. Yeah, supposed to work, um. Okay, so Edit Report Options, um. Oh, here we go, huh. This is really hard following my own instructions, but alright, so periods, period ending, so right now it's, it says, uh, April, April thirtieth, uh, I might may wanna change that to, uh, that the, uh, three thirty one, which is the end of Q one for the quarterly report, but I'm gonna go with, uh, with the latest right now, I'll just say end of the year, so we get all of the data that's in the system today.
Is that, is there a way to make that go to the current date? 'Cause I was going over this with Peter and his on his computer, and it defaulted to twenty twenty two. And we ran a report and we're like, what?
Right.
Oh, wait. But then we, I mean, you just gotta toggle it, but does it always just default to the first day?
Yes. So, uh, so mine defaults to twenty twenty two, and I don't know why, but I just.
Yours does the same.
Yeah, I I built the report for twenty twenty two and it wasn't pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, so I, uh, but so you have to pay attention to that.
You do.
Yeah, and and there may be a way of changing that, I don't know how to do it.
Yeah, so if you wanna change that, so like, now his, it's gonna do whatever the last time he saved it, so if he puts it in twelve thirty one twenty four, and then down the bottom he hits Save and Generate Report, the next time he goes in, it's gonna have twelve thirty one twenty four as the default date.
Possibly, yeah.
'Cause like right now.
But it's not a big deal, I mean,
Yeah.
that's pretty, somewhat standing.
Yeah.
You gotta pick your dates.
Okay, so this one here, it's there's a Skip Accounts with Zero Balance Activity. We have a lot of accounts with zero balance, so that's kind of a nice thing to just to click that, you don't need to, but it just gets that out of out of mind.
Yes.
So if there's a, there's zero budget, zero expense.
How do we have zero, I thought if you don't use, if you don't budget a dollar, that line has to disappear.
No, so we're not allowed to charge, sorry, so by
No. I wish.
By R S A, we can't charge to that account, but our system's not gonna ignore it.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to utilize an account, it has to have a reason.
I don't know, let's say definitely.
Right.
Or a calendar, or whatever you want.
I'm not sure if that is good.
And when you, when you click on that Skip Accounts with Zero Balance or Activity, it's gonna just, it won't even print them out.
It starts out with things, which changes on the head.
Yeah.
So you don't have to look it, weed through them all.
Yeah.
Nice. Okay, so, uh, we've said zero balance, um, Skip Accounts with Zero Balance, and I'm gonna save and generate the report. And it actually takes a little bit of time to do that.
Is that because of our server or?
No, it's a lot of information, it's done.
That's the software.
It's a lot of data, okay, so.
Doesn't take too long.
Now that it pops up, we say View, and it's gonna be here, here's our data, now, this is based on the complete town budget, the General Ledger, so, and I haven't figured out how to delete some of the stuff in it yet, but it starts off.
I figured it out by accident, how to get rid of that top stuff.
Oh, good, hold on, hold that thought, we'll talk about that after.
I can't, yeah. I don't remember.
So, so all I all I care about for for this meeting is expenses, so we're gonna scroll down, and this is where it's gonna slow down a little bit. Uh, Expenditures, alright, so we're about a third of the way down probably, and here are the town office's expenses, there's the account, there's the, uh, department, the description, how much we're, how much we budgeted eighty five thousand, how much we spent so far, thirty thousand dollars. Okay, now, the neat thing about it is if you, if you want to, uh, modify the data, look at it, play around, do some things in Excel, you can export this to Excel right here, that that little X there, that'll export it to Excel, and then and then you can do anything you want to with the data at that point. Comes up with a real nice ex- Excel report.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So let me, uh,
It's beautiful.
I can do that if you want to, I don't think we have to go through that, but it's it's pretty, pretty good, so. Okay, so now, look at this report here, actually, I'll pick one, uh, did he, General Supplies, so I wanna know more about that account, so I can click on that, that link right there, and it brings up the Supplies line.
Wow.
So I can go through and say, what have we spent there, in two thousand twenty four to the beginning? Oh, look at that. You can go through the detail, you can just click, keep on clicking away, and say what we spent.
Real dirty.
Look at this.
Yeah.
This is crazy.
Isn't it amazing?
Yeah.
That is looking cool.
That is awesome.
Pretty slick.
Yeah. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna now, now, this this is one, this is one way of getting details, is by going through the reports.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna step back, now feel free, you know, you guys can play with this, follow the instructions and go through and and build these reports and play around with it. I'm gonna go back and do a little bit different one, which is summarized on this next page, so let me close out of this one.
So before, um, I don't know.
Uh, back to the dashboard. Okay, probably easier for you guys, because you don't need to write write the the finance reports, is is taking a look at the, um, a quick account summary, so that's the next page, so we go to, uh, General Ledger, and there's Account Central in here, Account Central. This step is not in your instructions, I apologize for that, but when this pops up, we only care about the General Fund for expenses. Now you may care about the trusts, you can go through the trusts, you can go through the re- the re- the, um, revolving accounts and all this, if you wanna look at the Heritage Account, you can look at it right here, um, you can do all that, but for, you know, my discussion, we're gonna focus on the on the, uh, General Fund. So we double-click on that, and then here's the same departments. Now you notice it starts in twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty four encumbrance. Over here, a couple of options, do we, do we wanna look at the prior year? And, uh, when I say no, all I'm gonna try to do is clean up the screen a little bit, I don't care about twenty twenty three, and I don't care about encumbrances. And then here's a real quick snapshot of each department, same thing you saw in the report, how much we're spending and how much, uh, we have remaining.
So cool.
So, uh, the Building Department, let's look at that.
Hold on.
Building Department, yep. So, it was under Computer Support, I believe. Four, three, one, two dot five, hmm. Four, three, one, two dot five. How come it's not here?
Computer Support is there, line four, three, three.
Yeah, I don't think it was in that one though, maybe it is, alright, let's let's dig down on this one here. So we just keep walking through, and I Works, oh, there we go, five thousand, and a credit for five thousand dollars. Okay, so net net zero then.
Mm-hmm. So I think what happened is we got the bill, we were gonna pay it, oh yeah, we printed the check, and then they said, no, we don't want your money, so we backed it, we voided the check.
Yep. Excellent.
Good, okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's go backwards a little bit, get out of that, um, we can just clear these, up here we should clear these, we go back to the, um, to the departments, and the other one, other question was D P W, four, three, one, two dot five.
I love this.
Four, three, one, two dot five, 'cause we'll click in there, it's salt. So we can actually go further, we could even find out who who we bought it from.
So I thought that was... I didn't think that was a separate line, I thought it was.
It is.
Hmm.
Well, so, I think it's.
I remember as seeing it as a separate line, but I didn't think we used that one.
Yeah. Yeah, well, he, I mean, I think he was, that's what he's been quoting it for, and it's not the negative, is it?
No.
No, we're still, we're, we budgeted, we're still good.
Yeah, I was trying to say, and usually we
Yeah, I don't know why I thought it was a different.
we usually buy more, it seems like, at the beginning of a year than like, November, December, yeah.
Hmm. Yeah, 'cause we get a better deal.
Yeah.
We have that contract.
Right, right, right.
State pricing, whatever.
Yeah. Which is also, was that Eastern, I think, is the other one that they also do the same thing.
Cool?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it awesome?
It is.
Yeah, great to see all the detail just right there, yeah.
We just click, 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 yeah, and you don't have to go to, like with B M S I, you would've had to go into, look at the invoice
Yeah.
and find the invoice number, and then, you know, who did we pay, how much was, it was just, this is just, you're right there.
Yeah, this here just gets clicked, as long as it's all, as long as it's all
It's just a trail.
Correct, move it in, yeah.
I was gonna say, and sometimes you can even click on, you say you go onto Morton Salt, and then you go over, you can go pull up a check
Awesome.
and click on the check number, look at the window, you can print, pull up the stuff and see the invoice, if there's an invoice number on it, make sure it's not allocated to the wrong invoice, and stuff like that, the detail, and this is insane, if you really.
Yeah, so if D P W brought a pusher and you could drill down and find out
Mm-hmm.
where they bought the pusher.
Mm-hmm.
It does help a lot with, when you're sitting at the desk and you can't find the invoice or something, or, I mean,
That's nice.
they need to be separated in the filing cabinet, and just, I'm putting it out there, but it's easy to find things like this.
Yeah, there is an opportunity to to add attachments under, um, you know, so it has the invoice number, but you can actually add the attachment here too, I'm not sure how to do that. Baby steps, I know, yeah, I don't know if I want anybody, but
Can you click on that? Yeah.
But really, if if Mike were to get an invoice, and we got him to this this far, it'd be great if he can say, okay, let me just paste that in here now.
Yeah.
You know, one of one of the things that's really nice is when you look at Supplies, uh, it, you look at that Staples, 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 you, that's a lot of money, what are we buying?
Right.
And without calling you or calling, you know, the office to say, this, that's, I could tell really quickly, say, yeah, this is right, see, okay, makes sense.
Right.
We're getting there, yeah.
Yeah, and especially Staples too, because I had, we, Staples got rid of their regular credit card, so we have this Staples Advantage account, which supposedly we're supposed to get a bigger discount and whatever, and they just bill us, so we're not paying with a Staples credit card, so I had them set it up, so every time we order something, I can say it, this is for Board of I can say it, this is for board of, even if there's fifteen different things on there, I can, this is for the town clerk, this is for the board of assessors, so when Mindy gets that printout, it already says who's gonna get it, she just, and I gave her all the account numbers, so she just has to put the account numbers to whatever it says.
Yeah.
So, eas- easy peasy, yeah, so we're trying to integrate everything, kinda, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's like purchase orders.
Yeah, we're working on it, and we're working on a few other things too, and, yeah, we've talked about Jenny's figured out a couple little things that we're gonna try to teach some of her departments.
But. Yeah. Yeah.
It's gonna be a little bit more complicated with that, but as you get on, when you can like, they can send me their invoices, and they'll have the post, my post data.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, that's the attachment thing.
Exactly, so she, she, I wouldn't have to.
Yeah, Jenny figured it out.
Yeah, she didn't figure out the attachment part, but that's a scan-in thing, it's not a big deal.
Oh. Oh, okay.
The attachment thing, I'm assuming you can attach either something like a P F or whatever.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing if we are at this point, and you click on the attachment, it's all the invoices that were scanned.
Yeah. Exactly, so if we just have to rub them all in, and then, it's kinda like the BMO when we do them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, right.
At the receipts and attach them to the invoice, yeah.
Yeah. Which would be really cool when people give you five invoices that have already been paid and code them, so then they could have just looked up and said.
Sure.
Yeah, we don't need to talk about it.
Okay, I'm just saying, like it's not, yeah.
It's bad data to talk about. No, you're right though, it would, and it would give the opportunity.
So, it would not take up your time.
So I could clean my mess up with FAC quarterly, cuz I.
Yeah. Anyways, again, we digress.
Yeah.
So, we're based at this turn here, you're really close to be able to build your own reports.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it really, it didn't take me long to do it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, my Excel spreadsheet's got some fancy things in there, but, but all the data came right out of here now, so that was really easy.
Yeah. I like when you guys are done.
Yeah.
I want you to keep doing that. No, but it is, but I do, I, I am excited to be able to do this because of that reason, I could do it monthly.
Yeah, exactly.
And then if you guys ran the FAC thing quarterly, and I'm already caught up, would be nice once in a while for you too.
Yeah. Yeah, when, when we build a report, if everything is below fifty percent, twenty-five percent, seventy-five, we, we just ignore it, so there's no sense of digging anymore, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just when we're a little bit higher, audit account charges, that's what it was.
Yeah, and I already know, I have adjustments I have to make, like I already have it in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, having the opportunity to even get a monthly report like that would be super helpful for me.
Yeah.
Hmm. Nice.
Okay, any questions?
Love it.
Well, nice to see that, you know, all coming together, and, you know, everybody's figuring it out, and.
We're trying to integrate things.
Yeah, like working together on how it can be better for each other, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that seems like the, the system's powerful enough to do all, everything that we expected it to do, so.
Probably more, but we just don't.
Mm, although, I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, you're scratching the surface, I'm just.
I was just gonna say that, yeah, when I went to, um, the co- I had some classes last week or the week before,
Yeah, yeah.
um, everyone in there, they were asking like, what programs do you use and everything, and the only one that are working well right now is B S N A. People are having the BMSI, G Works, some people are even using back, they went back to QuickBooks. Town and municipalities because of how bad things went with BMSI and G Works in that whole situation.
BMSI was. Yeah.
In BMSI Cloud, they're switching over to the G Works, G Works wasn't prepared for New Hampshire, they thought, oh, no taxes, no big deal. They didn't take into respect retirement, they, it doesn't, they have to manually enter every single month, or every single month, um, because it had, it's not compatible at all.
Mm-hmm.
Which we're working on with B S N A to find a report to make it a little more compatible, right now it's complicated.
Because New Hampshire Retirement changed their system, but G Works didn't even know about New Hampshire Retirement.
My, doesn't even produce a report for it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're glad we switched to B S N A, when we did.
Yeah. Yeah, as much as, yeah, I would say as much as we, we have anger issues towards it.
Angst, yeah.
Yeah, there's some angst there for sure, but, in, I think in the big picture, I think it was probably the best thing to do is switch when we did, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then, and then once we all kinda get it, once we've been using it for a while, I feel like, I feel like you need a good year. Do you know what I mean, of using it daily and, you know, to figure it out, to, to get, I mean, unless you're Jilla or.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, unless you enjoy it and sit over there and run reports and have awful kinds of fun over there.
Yeah, yeah.
We'd really would love for you to come to me.
So it's good to hear, you know, from your peers and like your peer group that this was the way to go.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right now anyways, you know, things can change, but, yeah, so it's at least good to get that encouragement when you're fresh and learning the system, and that's worthwhile.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
That you're not just gonna start banging your head against the wall in six months, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we have been banging our house, but for other reasons too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is the, um.
So you, you have to keep in mind that I'm very, very focused, and, you know, I'm not looking at the whole big picture, I'm only looking at expenses by the department, so. So when I, when I learned how to use this, that was my focus, and you asked me a question about how to enter invoice, I don't know how to do it. Um, could I figure it out? I'm not sure, probably, maybe, but, but, so it looks like I know what I'm talking about, that I know how to get this data, that's it.
Yeah. And do you know how to get help if you need it, have the, give you a call back or an email or whatever?
No.
If you click on your name? Yeah, you guys can do it too, and then help, and then, so when you see contact tech support, you send them an email, put your phone number and your email address in. Sometimes they'll email you, sometimes I'll just say, I need someone to remote in, and show me how to do, like walk me through this. So I'll send the email saying that, and then when they call me, I'll click on remote assistance, they give you a session key, and they just jump into your computer and show you how to do everything.
Yeah.
Nice.
So, it's awesome.
I remoted in with a nine, one, one, call me please, and call me, that, yeah, I did wait in for a little minute, and I was getting very frustrated that I still waited, so.
Yes. I told you. Yeah, and I'm like, just send in nine, one, one, call me now.
And they did, so, it worked, and it was right in front of my face the whole time.
Yeah.
Nice.
That's all right, yeah, but you know what?
That's like me in the grocery store.
Right?
Where is this?
So I have my kit, my son is doing it literally on Sunday, where is it?
Right there. So anyways, and then there's help documentation as well, so you can go click on that and put in a topic that you wanna look at, or how to do something, and sometimes it's helpful, sometimes it's not, sometimes I still end up sending an email, but. Is it me, or is it?
So, you can get the display, yeah, a whole bunch of different ways.
There's a.
So when you build the report, there's still active links in there that bring you back to different, different, you know, windows that, that pop up, and, and you can keep digging through different ways. So it's not like you have to learn a single method to get to this level, you can go through reports, you can go through your account central, there's different ways of getting to that data, so.
Yeah. It's crazy.
As long as you know how to save, you don't ruin anything either.
Well, for us, it's all read-only.
Yeah.
Oh.
Now, but now, I'll be down with Peter, and we're looking at his thing, and I just told him, let's not.
Yeah. Um. Don't touch anything.
Don't click anything, let's just look at it.
So I, yeah, I wanna go down and spend, I, like, well, at some point when things are, when I can get to the auditor updates that I have, and then,
Is that necessary?
obviously FAC is pri- I, I like to make it a priority, but once we can kinda get over that hump this summer, I was hoping to get down and sit with Peter and.
Is it gonna be an employees?
That was for, um.
BMO.
The credit card.
BMO.
Yeah, cuz that's a whole other.
Yeah. Too many levels.
Yeah, and honestly, I think right now with Peter, or with, I mean, department heads in general, I think we need to get them figuring it out, so they can look at what's their accounts, what they have available, what they paid.
Mm-hmm.
If, you know, cuz there's invoice numbers in there, if they get, cuz we get repeats all the time. I spend a lot of time going through files and going through the computer to see and double-checking, and we've, you know, it's gotten better. I have, I don't pay it.
So you're saying there's a double request to pay an invoice?
Yeah, today, for example, she got five invoices from one department, four of them had already been paid, but she had to waste all this time going through to make sh- to see if the pass.
So this sounds.
It's got, yeah, I think that it's, it's some training with, and I don't mind doing, it, cuz it's not, it's more about looking through information,
Yeah.
finding where to look, looking through, at, right now, that's it, and just making sure, and even checking and making sure your stuff is in the right place too, cuz they can,
Right. Yeah.
You know, you can look at something and be like, yeah, I guess that probably belongs there, and I can do the same thing, it might've gotten coded wrong, and so it'd be good, and I'm using Peter as an example just because I, he, he has the most bills, so it, when with coding, you know, he could just say he accidentally hits six, one, oh, when you really should've probably done like four, three, two, you know, it's just,
Mm-hmm.
a simple little, like, I was doing postage, and it, and it was set, it was a four, it was like, I don't even know, it was like four, oh, nine, oh, and it's supposed to be four, oh, nine, one, and it, I was literally like digging through the book like, where's four, oh, nine, oh, there is no such thing.
We saw Joker's doing that.
Yeah, yeah, but it's nice cuz you, all you have to do is just X back, and it takes you back to the next one, and you can say, okay, it's this department, so I'm in the right area, and then go from there, and that's kind of a bonus of this too, is instead of with BMO, you had to type in the exact number the right way the first time with the dot.
Yeah, BMSI, yeah.
In the, BMSI, and the, you know, everything had to be right for you to pull it up, and if you're wrong, you gotta go back and start again, yeah.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Where this one, it's like, you can go back one number and start again.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, for those kinds of things, I definitely think this is a.
Yeah.
So how many months has this been in operation in the accounting office?
Mid-December.
Mm-hmm.
So, about six months.
Hmm, four. Four and a half.
Hmm?
Four and a half.
Yeah, but four and, yeah, but four and a half, don't, don't rush the summer.
Oh.
Like, it's almost June, please, I don't understand it.
That's how I was thinking, like, a month behind, we're almost June, six months, six months.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah.
But so the, the learning curve has been pretty steep. But it's starting to get a little bit less.
Yeah, like they can show you the basics, but there's things that you need every day, that, like, you don't necessarily know you need it, so you don't know, you need them to teach it to you.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so it, it's, it's, and like Nancy was having all kinds of issues, that will do to, do from thing, it was set up right, she was doing it wrong, because that's the way she was taught in BMSI, you don't do it the same way in B S N A, so all of this time wasted.
Right, well, right. Yeah, cuz my do to do frams.
You know what I mean? But not her fault, she was doing what she was taught.
Right, and when I used to enter do to do frams, it was, you had to do it after everything was completely done, you go in and do journal, the do to do frams.
By Lisa. Yeah.
Mm, on my end now, it's auto, so, I don't have to do any of it, all these huge steps are just gone.
It's, yeah, automatically does it.
I mean, there's, there's always ups and downs to everything, but that was one of those things that you could screw up, and good luck trying to figure it out, cuz do to do frams, I mean, you guys aren't reviewing all that stuff, you know what I mean, so that would've been something that the auditors would've had to like,
Hmm. Right.
smash your head against the wall and figure out because, now it's just done.
Right, but now they're. It's easy peasy, yeah.
Yeah. So now that it's done, right.
Like, you don't have to do anything, it's just done.
And I think another advantage, like, a lot of the department heads are newer, they may have,
Hmm.
actually, they didn't have anything to do with the other software, and now we're demanding that they do.
No. Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, but, that is an advantage, if they don't have.
Yeah, it makes their life easier, because.
Yeah, it might, it might, it might be easier.
Once it's figured out, yeah.
Yeah, if they wanna go in and say, hey, I wonder if this invoice was paid, and they can just go in and look, yep, it was, no, it wasn't, and then,
Yeah. Right.
you know, because we used to have complaints about that all the time, I said, this five months ago, why isn't it paid?
Yeah. I remember hearing that.
Got lost in a pile, you know what I mean, but now, they're all, they can go in and look whenever they want to see if a certain invoice was paid, or to see where they are in their budget, they don't have to wait for anybody once a month to send them off.
I was just gonna, and that's the other thing, is you don't have to wait till the end of the month to figure out where your money is and how much you have, especially towards the end of the year.
Yeah. Right. Right. And just go in at any time and look.
Yeah, when you really need to be careful of what you're spending, it's right in front of you at any point.
Yeah.
Pretty good thing, and then that BMO will simplify it even more?
Mm-hmm. That's the credit card.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Cuz that was another thorn in the side that we heard from FAC, and we've heard from Mindy, and you.
So. Yeah. Yeah, and the, the auditors are just like, they were beside themselves, they're like, this is so much better, cuz we had Citizens Bank before for the credit card.
Yeah.
And it was always a nightmare mess, they were like, just about literally giddy over.
They were also really happy with how organized everything was, interesting.
Yes, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, everything is organi- I mean, they were happy with everything.
Yeah.
We're, they said we are in the best shape that we've been in five years for their audit, so.
Very nice.
It was nice too, because ahead of time, I was like, okay, let's get, like, I need a, I need, show me some paper, so I know what I'm looking for for reports, so we were able to upload.
Yeah, we, we uploaded n- probably a good eighty percent of what they needed prior to coming here.
All reports. Yeah.
And then, um, we also, I mean, they, they do random audits, they want five different months, one week during that month,
Mm-hmm.
and five different employees for each of those, you know, so we have to pull all the payroll records for, they want the pay stub, they want the time cards, they want,
Yeah.
you know, all of that stuff, so it's not something that's in the ca- like, we don't put the time, can we put the time pads in the computer?
Well, yeah.
You can put invoices.
We could, yeah, I mean, I'm sure we could do something like that, I just don't know if the payroll, I'd have to look. I'd have to look, but I don't know if the payroll, if it, there's like a, you know how there's like a upload? I don't know if there's a payroll for that.
Hmm, I wonder.
Yeah, I'm curious.
That'd be interesting.
It would be a nice way to keep it all together.
It's so we don't have to keep the paper.
Is there, is there an add-on to B S N A or?
I don't think so.
I don't know.
Um, it seems like it'd be a natural complement to a payroll service.
I feel like we had a conversation with them about it, but it was really expensive to add on the payrolls thing, I thought.
No, cuz they didn't, uh, oh, right.
I feel like there was something, but it was like, it was.
No, that was time cards.
That's what I'm talking.
Oh, we're.
And they said it wasn't worth it, that's, the, the, the thing itself was, it was called time cards, I can't even see.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah. I know, we need a shade.
But, yeah, can you get that flag, that marina flag, just a little to the left?
Let's see if we can flag it a little bit.
One more.
There you go.
There we go, pretty good, better, um, and he said because we have so few employees compared to, like, what it's made for, it wouldn't be worth the money to spend on it to get that module.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I would.
That was one of the things that the auditors commented on?
What?
No, I, we did it pretty good.
Was it?
No, no, that was something different.
I was saying, we got, we were off one point seven five hours for an entire year, and that was with multiple people at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And one of the errors was on my.
So. Yeah.
But one point seven five hours being off on an audit for an entire year is ridiculously good.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, so, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm really pleased, I can't wait to see that final report.
I, I can't wait to see my report card, yeah.
It's a team effort, Mindy.
No, I know, but I really, this has been, I've been stressing about this since I probably started, cuz I watched last year's audit, and I was like.
I know. A nightmare, yeah.
I was scared.
Well, living a nightmare, it was just.
No, but they weren't happy.
No, they were.
They weren't happy, anyways, yeah, yeah.
Anyways, we digress.
This has been very good.
Yeah.
Nice to hear, and I look forward to digging into it someday.
It's there if you want to.
Yeah, well, it's good stuff to know.
Yeah.
Really good.
All right, any more questions? We all good?
Yeah. Thank you again, Joe, for everything you're doing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah, very good.
Well, I'll do the software and stuff like that, but, and figuring stuff out.
That's awesome, Joe.
Nice job, under your time allotted.
I know, well.
I'm very impressed.
I talked to them.
This is once again above and beyond.
Yes.
It really is.
It has to be one of the best committees ever, like honestly, like put together, for like keeping things organized, I feel like FAC is like, was such a smart idea.
We need to put them in the budget next year.
See how you are.
Yeah.
Yeah, for what the pur- for this purpose, like literally, it's so smart.
Well, we're just really blessed to have, you know, the group of people who wanna do it.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The idea was just, is this replacing your Excel?
The beginnings of it.
We happen to get.
I'm sorry?
Is this replacing Excel project you had last year?
I know.
Yeah.
We took an initiative like, okay, good.
No, no.
Are you still doing that?
Yeah, um, so.
Oh, yeah, cuz you guys make notes and stuff.
So the question. Yeah, so the question was, can this replace the Excel work that we do now, so, um, we, we still have spreadsheets that we, that we use to, to build the budget in each of the departments. Um, and then we have a master spreadsheet that we share with the Board of Selectmen all the time, uh, those are still necessary, cuz we won't be able to build the reports that we want, you know, manipulate that data in this tool here, and.
Right. To do the twos and the threes and notes.
Yeah, our data doesn't get to here until it's already been, been drafted and draft one, the Board of Selectmen's seen it. Our data doesn't get to here until it's already been, been drafted and draft one, the board of selectmen has seen it.
That's good.
I just was wondering if you, all that time and effort you guys did to build that system went away, whether it's you that did nothing. No, and we used it, a lot, last year we, we're like, okay, three percent total, two percent.
Yeah.
When it was the year before, last year, we just did three percent, but, but, and to have instantaneous disappearing path was.
Right. Right.
That's why I was impressed with the Excel, and I was hoping that it didn't go away, because even though this is awesome.
Mm-hmm, people that did a lot of work on it.
Yeah.
Well, right there.
Yeah.
There's people. That'll be a while.
The people, your Excel spreadsheet.
It's him and Dennis, right? Dennis, you and Dennis created that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, programming in Excel, basically.
Yeah.
Yep, so Dennis did the majority of all that work on, on building that master spreadsheet.
Oh, did he?
Oh, yeah, yeah, created a pivot and constructed it, and that was, that was awesome, yeah.
Yep.
And he even said that he'll be able to consult, uh, when, when necessary, so when it comes to building the, the twenty-five model, um, it's likely I'm gonna call him up and take him up on that offer and say, hey.
We'd love it if he'd come visit us too.
Absolutely.
All right, yeah, so we got a couple minutes before we start opening paving bids, I assume that's why you're in, sir?
Yes.
What was your name and what company you were?
I'm Gus Lorando, and I'm with Allstate Construction.
Nice to see you.
Been over here since, God, I don't know, forty, well, Tommy Sari was here, even before Tommy Sari.
So that'd be David Leo, was it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, Butchy Leo, well, not here, but Butchy with the state.
Yeah.
Your first name is Gus?
First name's Gus.
Last name?
Lorando, L-E-R-A-N-D-E-A-O, I'm sorry, I don't have a business card.
That's okay, just need it for the minutes. Think you can get yours done in seven minutes?
Yeah, if they sign everything and let me go.
Here you go.
Oh, this sounds like, uh, my variation, huh? Good times, good work.
Uh, I think, um, there's an extra, the time cards stuff in there too, that's to go with the time cards sign up, yeah.
Oh, that, in your right, in your right hand, that goes with the time cards, payroll.
Yeah, I had to do that last year.
Do we have, like, time cards?
Six fifteen, she had a half in her, are you, are you kidding?
They only get two.
Yeah. That's what happened.
But take that bottom paper flip and put it with payroll.
Could, the burger. Whole payroll card.
Oh.
Automatically for each person.
Put that with payroll.
Yeah.
No.
At the time, I was still.
Just the bottom paper flip.
Except, and.
Anyway.
It looks lighter.
No, no, no. I was like, oh, dude.
That goes in your signature folder.
Maybe it won't run out.
So, should I start, before he starts looking through it and he picks it apart and then is mad at me because I didn't tell him what's going on? So, we talked about this last year about starting to upgrade the equipment at the park, it's super, it's super dangerous. Um, the quote on, uh, the, it was my first pick, was the top one in the quote, um, right behind the form, the dressing form. That quote is, that bill, I mean, that one in particular, that's checked off, um, that was my first choice. It's lower, um, you'll notice the bars that need to go on the ground are thinner. Um, it's cost, it's actually cost effective too, I was surprised at the price, to be honest, cause it dropped, it dropped from my original quote. Um, and then, so it'll cost, uh, it'll be lower than the ground, so it's actually suited for the material on the playground. And then, I added five hop circle things to go off of it. And even with that, and the shipping, which they have for that particular one, it's like a two or three week shipping time. Um, it stayed way under what I was originally expecting to pay. I wanted to a- add something for the younger, younger kids, like the two, three and under, or three, two, under. Um, and so I was originally gonna do a fairy house, which is really cute, but it didn't hold as many, I had a, I got to know the gentleman who owns this co-, or is a salesperson for this company. And he actually guided me, said, why don't you buy some of the s- house structures instead? Because the fairy house was about five or six thousand dollars, right around there, and we could get a little house for five hundred dollars. So, I mean, it was a no brainer. And he's saying, he's like, it's a, it's a good thing, it's cool, but you can't have as many kids using it in this one. So, I had kind of thrown the idea around of doing a little bit of like, a little mini town, and they even have like, a food truck, little mini house.
How cute.
Yeah, so if we have, if we got two little cottages and a food truck, so this, we get three, so more than enough kids can play with it at one time. It's only fifteen, it's under fifteen hundred dollars. And it's right there, we put it together at the park, they are, they stay at the park, and then we just start maybe, maybe, I think it's a good idea to put them away for the winter, they'll last longer. But it's the same idea as the fairy house, except we would not be able to put it away at the winter. So, I already purchased one cottage, just because I figured if you guys said no to me, it wasn't a lot of money on the revolving fund that I could eat that one expense for the littler kids. Sorry. For the littler kids, um, but I'd like it where the plan was to come out of capital reserve, when we talked about it last year. For the replacements, and then we have the added things into it, I think, and we're way under, the only thing I didn't include that in here was obviously like, the cement to hold the posts and things like that. Because I don't know what it's gonna cost, and I'm okay having that cost be a revolving fund, I think it's a more of a, it's not gonna be as. Yeah, it's not gonna be a, a, a high overhead, so I'm not worried about that staying out of revolving. But for capital reserve, I was hoping to have that done, that was why I asked for more money, was to start working on getting those bigger things done, and this was way under budget this year. And thought, why not start with a smaller project that needs the, the TLC desperately?
So, do you want me to construction start on?
They, if, if approved, I can order it tomorrow, and it'll be here in two to three weeks. And then, I can, um, I've been working on putting a crew together to help me build it.
To be volunteers?
Hundred percent, yes, I, I can afford not to have volunteers, but if it's my, me and my husband down there by ourselves, I don't care. I want the kids to have a safer playground, so.
So it shouldn't be you and your husband by yourself?
I mean, it won't be, my daughters got home tonight and, plus, I do have a sixteen year old who can help, um.
Do your job. You can reach out though.
I will.
As, there's networks of people and.
And make sure to make.
So, he's gonna mix the cement for me, so, he's coming.
Yeah, I'll make sure you don't email it.
So, I do, I mean, we have a really great community, I'm, I know that if I put it out there.
Yeah, that's what I mean, and everyone has their own circles, so.
Exactly, well, and that's something I'm finding is, there's, you know, if, it, it's a, I scratch your back, you scratch mine situation, I'm more than happy to help out where it is needed. I did wanna reach out to a few other organizations that work within the Parks and Rec too, um, or utilize the Parks and Rec to help out, since it's gonna benefit all of us.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
That's coming up on our agenda.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just a review of it.
Um. Yeah, so, it would be that, and then, um, the only other thing to chew on is the, I got a bunch of information from, I spoke with Cody Valencourt. And warned Gary Zomro, um, about the fireworks situation, I went through and did a Fourth of July.
Okay.
Yeah, we went through, I found all the information, got all kinds of stuff put together. But I just wanted to throw it at you, because we're gonna have, it's gonna, that your next meeting will be more like, formal presentation, I just didn't know I was gonna work until five thirty tonight. So I couldn't put the pro- proper presentation together, but it's a really, I'm actually really excited about it.
Okay.
But, yeah, so.
Hmm, excellent.
Cool?
Yeah.
Very good.
Sounds good. All right, so.
And ding ding ding.
Yeah, six oh one, Peter, you mind just grabbing that light behind the door?
Good job.
Yep.
I wasn't even gonna start at sixteen.
I will, so are you done now, or?
Look if you like. I'll like.
That's all you needed, or did you need more?
So, we, have we approved it?
Oh.
No, we didn't, we'll come back to it though, cause, uh, you know, you know, this gentleman's coming, you know, for the paving bids, so.
Yep.
That's all right, if you wanna.
Oh, we, we could get into, we, we could get into a half hour discussion, so.
Just past my bedtime.
Yeah. All right, so it's time, uh, we'll open up the paving bids that we received so far, looks like we have four.
Yep.
I think we only had three last year.
Hmm. This first one's from Busby Construction. Their total bid package was seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. I'll kinda go through and open them all and then compare the, uh, ton prices, uh, I'll take a, kinda peek at it and keep the. Uh, advanced, uh, excavating and paving. So their, uh, total bid package came in at five hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen and eighty-seven cents. Next we have, uh, Allstate Construction. And their total bid package came in at five hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-two and twenty-five cents.
Did you break it?
Yeah. How's that thing last leg?
No, I can bite you, you're gonna have to take it, use it.
You can't wear that.
Use my teeth.
Do you wanna be looking at these a little?
Yeah.
I'm just writing down the numbers right now.
This one's from PJ Keating.
Okay, who was it?
PJ Keating. Uh, so they came in at two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-two and seventy-five cents.
What?
Hmm.
So, it's definitely, yes, we gotta take a look and make sure.
Two hundred.
Is it in two pieces?
No.
That's weird.
I was just gonna say, that's like, half.
Not great at all.
No, no, no.
Well, how many tons are they? That's what we gotta compare.
Yeah, the, the tonnage, prices.
No, my sister used to work there.
And even the amount of tons.
I'm just surprised that they.
Yeah, how they calculated it, yeah.
Yeah, so they're contracts.
Peter, did you wanna take a run through and see if you could find out where the anomaly might be on that one? PJ Keating.
Unit prices, the tonnage.
It didn't look that off, like, it was a little bit lower, but it wasn't, you know, down in the eighties, cause that's where it happened to be, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, usually you go by the tonnage.
Yeah.
Does he have a gross amount of tonnage?
That's what we're gonna have to find out.
Yeah.
With two fifty-seven, about forty-two, right?
Yeah. And seventy-five cents.
Okay.
If you wanna get technical.
You grabbing on them though?
Hmm?
Yeah, you can hand me one as well. All the streets.
Allstate, so keep that with, uh.
Just Busby.
And maybe that's. Uh, that's what we had, the, uh, the alternate work too, uh, for Blueberry, like, doing the shoulder work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Two.
That was Busby, priced either.
No, they didn't, but, so, and those numbers that I read off didn't include that shoulder work.
Right, this one here doesn't have a price for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's no bid given for grow, grade, loam and seed. Sides of Blueberry Lane injury.
Hmm.
So the. I see a, uh, price for milling per square yard, and then price per ton in place, and then price per ton without wrap in place. And then reclaiming and grading per square yard, and then final grade Sun Hill Road. I don't see any numbers for total tonnage.
Oh, they didn't include any of their calculations, yeah.
Calculations, yeah, I don't see anything. Does it have a list of roads? They didn't even put that on there. The only list of roads for doing the loaming part, for that part of that, loaming seed and stuff for the Blueberry acres area, that was it.
Which one are you, which one are you looking at?
Uh, PJ Keating.
Okay.
Geez, that price, we could pay the whole town.
Why don't you, uh, why don't you take this one and take a look at it?
Price per ton, one hundred and eleven, one hundred and eleven dollars per ton.
Do you wanna do up a spreadsheet, like I did last year? Feel like next year when we do, we should do like a cover page that has price per ton, how many tons milling, like all that in the front and then total bid price, just as a cover sheet.
Yeah.
So every, you know, flipping from nine to seven pages and you you don't know what you're looking at and what's included and what's not.
Everyone. Yeah. A lot of pages really, you got to read and make your decision on it.
Right.
That one does have the tonnage in.
Yeah, and then some of it's just referrals and what kind of equipment they have, so it's not all a contract.
Yeah.
Right. I know. No, I know, but when he was looking, he's trying to find the prices, flipping, flipping, flipping.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was just telling Steve, we're not absorbing this many pages of contract.
Yeah. No. Oh, gotcha, but I still feel like we should have like a cover page that fills us up, put it on the top.
No, no, go through the the specifics too on each one, cause they se- seem to uh, vary greatly on what companies bid on and what they didn't bid on for some reason this year. So there's different aspects, or what they did or didn't give pricing for.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so for Advanced, uh, Excavating and Paving, uh, the price for milling per square yard, their uh, their bid was sixty s- sixty-six hundred dollars. There's a lump sum for start and stop joints and driveways. Uh, price per ton in place, ninety-one seventy-five a ton, uh, times five thousand, six hundred and ninety point nine three tons.
Five, six, nine, oh.
Yep, point nine three.
What was the price per ton?
Ninety-one seventy-five.
Uh, okay.
And that was, what was the first word you said? Price, price per?
What's that? Uh, price per ton in place.
The total tonnage was fifty-six ninety?
Yep, point nine three. So then, then we had a price per ton without wrap in place, there's no bid. Reclaiming and grading per square yard, no bid. Fine grade of Wilson Hill Road, eighty-five cents a square yard. Uh, times seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three, they came up with uh, six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and five cents. And then they did not um, offer a bid at a grade, loam and seed the sides of Blueberry Lane, Andrew Drive and Nora Court.
So, did we have any reclaiming this year?
Mm-hmm.
No, you didn't have any.
No. No, we're just top coating what we have, just to catch up.
A lot of top coating, top coating, mm. Alright, so for Busby. Uh, the price, the note under price for milling per square yard, it says included in per ton price. So price per ton in place, one hundred and twenty-six dollars per ton. Price per ton without wrap in place, one hundred and thirty-six dollars per ton. Then no bid for reclaiming grading. And then fine grade Wilson Hill Road, approximately sixty-four hundred dollars. Uh, they did that, calculated based off of two shifts of labor, at thirty-two hundred dollars a shift. And then to grade, loam and seed the sides of Blueberry, Andrew and Nora, it was sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I believe, if I saw the numbers right, they were at five thousand, eight hundred and six tons. Those three numbers for tonnage.
Mm-hmm.
Is it forty-nine, seventy-five, seven thirty-five and ninety-six? Is that the numbers are?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's fifty-eight oh six, fifty-eight oh six for total tonnage quoted.
So Busby, how many tons? It's a big difference. Oh.
No.
Not really, nevermind.
Advanced was.
I was looking at yards and tons.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a difference.
So then the, the last two.
Yeah, see that one here, uh.
This one doesn't give any tones on the tonnage, just the price.
Okay.
This one is a, a comment.
Okay. Alright, so for uh, PJ Keating. Price for milling per square yard, three dollars and fifty cents. Price per ton in place, one hundred and eleven dollars. Price per ton without wrap in place, one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Okay, I can't write that fast, in place?
Hundred and eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, what was the next one?
Uh.
Sorry.
Price per ton without wrap in place, one hundred and twenty-four dollars per ton.
Does that even? What is that, the wrap in place?
Um, not sure.
You use, you use a wrap material in making your asphalt, your hot mix, you can use a certain percentage of wrap. As recycled asphalt milled up, so it's, you have to deduct somewhat, cause virgin a- asphalt, virgin stone and all that stuff, just straight stone, no wrap in it.
Hmm.
Comes out around ten dollars a ton more, so that's, a lot of towns don't want wrap and most towns will take the wrap, so.
We're gonna have taken the wrap here at this point.
Didn't you say the no wrap? Oh, nevermind, yep.
Yeah.
Keep going.
So, is this um, without wrap and wrap, is that double? I mean, is, as it saying?
Sorry.
No, it's thirteen dollars a ton more, yeah, yeah.
It's just two separate prices, then you know, which one you pick.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, reclaiming and grading per square yard, three dollars. Fine grade Wilson Hill Road, uh, dollar seventy-five.
Per.
Uh, there's no per or, no.
Seventy-five times seventy-three hundred yards?
Or ju- uh, just a dollar seventy-five?
One dollar seventy-five is all it says.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but.
Well, take it.
Yeah.
No. No, yeah, it's, it's more than double than a loveless, yeah, this is PJ Keating.
Is this for Keating here?
No, I'm saying it's a dollar seventy-five.
You don't know what you're paying me for that one.
Yeah.
Drag, period, period.
Yeah.
And then, um, to grade, loam and seed the sides of Blueberry, Andrew and Nora, um, they bid that at uh, thirty dollars a square yard for roughly uh, twenty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. Yeah.
Well.
Total tonnage?
They don't have a total tonnage on theirs, if I could see, I don't know if I'm gonna keep going through it. Just gonna try to use that same bid page. Alright, then for Allstate. Uh, price for milling per square yard, uh, not applicable. Their price per ton in place, ninety dollars and fifteen cents. Price per ton without wrap in place, ninety-six dollars and fifteen cents. Still with me? Uh, reclaiming and grading per square yard, not applicable. Fine grade Wilson Hill Road, thirty-two hundred dollars.
Total?
Yep.
Total.
Okay.
And then to grade, loam and seed the sides of Blueberry, Andrew and Nora, uh, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Forty-eight, four fifty?
That's a separate bid, right?
Yeah, forty-eight, three fifty, yeah.
Three fifty, okay.
It's a separate bid.
And the tonnage that they were basing their car- calculations off. Looks like five thousand, six hundred and fifteen tons.
And it encompasses the following roads, Mason, Van Hill, For Farm, Hackler, Andrew, Nora Court, Blueberry and then uh, Wilson Hill, that's just reclaiming. I mean, that's just grading, but that road's included.
Yep.
And then getting a, um, and getting a base on it, on Wilson Hill.
Hmm, yeah.
Yep.
Total square yardage of forty-nine, forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine, uh, square y- square yards, when a binder was, yeah, when a binder was on uh, seventy-three, on Wilson Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Wilson Road, I mean, yeah.
Yep.
I have, I have a question. What's the difference of with wrap and without wrap? In terms of durability or?
Six dollars, six dollars difference.
No, in terms of durability.
About the same.
About the same.
I mean, everything is as good as it, what's underneath it, the road, the sands, you know, earth moves on it, so.
Yeah.
But, wrap is used everywhere, everywhere in. Everything going, I guess, I, there's a lot of wrap, I don't know if you ever go to Keen, but there's, there's a on, on over in Marlborough, there's a section of one twenty-four. Around the Troy sec- like those two flats there, go and look in the Troy, there's about a mile of wrap that was put out there last year, they've been putting an inch of mix on top of it.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a standard thickness there, do you use it?
The seconded term.
Excuse me?
Is there a stand- standard thickness?
Yeah, it's like, um.
Yeah, two ends.
Yeah, two inch.
The base course should be two inches.
Two inch compacted.
Thirty-five.
Uh, compacted, that's it, this is a compacted, nearly LA at two and a half inches.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that, I don't wanna do it.
Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
So it looks like, um. The two bid packs that we should really pay attention to are between Allstate and.
Advanced.
Advanced, yeah. And if you compare the two. Allstate's bid including, if we, if we wanted to, you know, have Blueberry done, comes out at, you know, roughly five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And that's with, um, the shoulder work out of Blueberry.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, Advanced didn't even offer a bid for that aspect, and they were higher on all their tonnage prices.
What was their tonnage price again?
Sorry, which one?
Ninety-one.
On Advanced.
Ninety-one seventy-five.
Ninety-one seventy-five, so it'd be, we're under by um.
Eighty cents.
Dollar, dollar and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Dollar.
A dollar of what, forty-five or something?
Forty-five, we're under about like five dollars, yeah, so it's, we're ninety point one five and they're ninety, what are they, ninety-one seventy-five, so that's.
Yeah, so a dollar sixty, that's a ton, yeah.
Dollar sixty, a ton, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
We're about ten cents, I, I think we're at ten cents a ton over last year.
Can I ask a question about the, the separate bid of grading on Blueberry and Andrew and all that? You were at forty-eight thousand, Keating?
Oh, that's a separate contract.
That's what I'm saying, sep- on the separate bid. Yeah, you were at forty-eight, Keating was at twenty-six and Busby was at sixteen.
Tell Busby to come fix it, I mean, it's a separate contract.
Well, I'm just, no, I n- I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm doing it as a separate question, I know it has nothing to do with the paving, I just didn't know why yours was thirty thousand dollars more than.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Busby in twenty-two thousand dollars more than Keating.
Because it's very, very intensive, and while we're doing that job, you know, raking the lawn and so forth, the pay was out of working.
And they were higher on everything else. Right, no, I was just asking, I wasn't, I didn't need you, I didn't want you to be defensive or anything, I was just asking a question.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, it was. No, no, I'm not, I mean, I just, you know, we have to look at it, we're in a paving business and we, and we're, we're not good landscapers, so.
Right. Right, okay.
Or if we're gonna be.
I was just curious.
Yes, that was, that was purely just, cause we could take care of it if we had to take care of that, right?
It's a, it's a big swing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Roger.
How much is in the budget for this?
Uh, well, we had that voted to another six hundred thousand in this year.
Yeah.
So what you, you got, whatever you got, you got six hundred thousand, so you're in at five oh nine?
Hmm.
Hmm.
Yeah, well, there was a bit. More that we had to spend to get Wilson Hill ready and.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah.
And culverts and all that kinda stuff, it's not just paving.
I think we're nipping, tucking.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we actually, on the culvert stuff, that can be taken out of the block ran.
Oh.
And the fabric and the gravel and all that, cause I got plenty in the block ran.
Oh, that'll, that block ran will cover it, nice, awesome.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's for rebuilding roads, that's purpose of it.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a road committee meeting tomorrow?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wanna.
Make a recommendation.
Have a, yeah, yeah.
I keep looking at, well, I guess that probably would be more safe for that meeting. Just.
Yeah.
Trying to get another road done, but.
To go over these, have the road committees, maybe put on, it will be.
That's kind of a separate. Yeah, I think that's a very good idea.
We're gonna have a full committee there.
Oh, you don't wanna award the contract tonight?
Um, last year, last year we made a recommendation to the, to the road committee and then the road committee made the final decision, that's what we did last year.
I think we'd have.
Okay. Okay. Roger.
When you get the bids, you don't require a certificate of insurance, I know they used to do that in the past.
Yep.
They're in, they're with the bids.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Yeah.
You're in, yeah.
In the bid bond as well. At least with one of them.
Yeah, yeah, that's right on the top, so. Alright, yeah, so four of these on, to the committee meeting tomorrow, road meeting meeting tomorrow and, you know, see what comes from the group, but.
Are you gonna give us a recommendation or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, not this evening, yeah, so I.
The meeting.
To the road committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend, uh, Allstate Construction, uh, for the paving contract this year, uh, to the road committee.
Yeah.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye. So then, we will just announce online or are we gonna wait two weeks? We can't really wait two weeks to announce it.
Alright, start our summer schedule.
Yeah, we started our summer schedule, ki- is it appropriate?
I think you could just get verified back.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's appropriate to just.
Yeah.
Do it through email and phone, however.
Let them know, yeah, that's what I did last year, you guys recommended to the road committee.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be a public media.
No, you guys recommended to the road committee and the road committee took the recommendation and then I emailed everybody, saying thank you for your bid.
Good. We can outfield with the, after this is all done, probably before next year.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
But, there are a lot of specs out there where you can just, you know, fill in blanks, this many, I would caution, that's what you really want, the item is like. This here was, item one was the hot mix, item two was the fine grading, but you have, and then you have the quantities, so that everybody's like, I've got uh, fifty-six hundred ton. We took it all from measurements of last year and so forth, and then somebody else will have fifty-eight.
Right.
So if, you have one number that they look at, you give them the number, this is the number for this, this is the number for that, all these items.
And then they can decide, this is what our price per tonnage is.
This is our price per ton.
Times.
Right.
How much that we give them, then.
But you can't say. You have, you have an inexpensive, uh, between all of them, you had an inexpensive price to say traffic control, so you could come and do the traffic control. And you got, you gotta go look right to your bottom line, but I mean, and that's what you do, but we'll get you, we'll work it anytime you want, but I can show you this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Every city and town has, not every, not every town, but every city has their own quantities and so forth, what they wanna use.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a need, it's, it's, I mean, that's the way the state always did it.
Okay. Okay.
Oh god, there was something else when I used to read him out, the guy was just like that, boom, 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 he went right down to endless, he was unbelievable.
Because it was, everyone was doing exactly the same.
Right.
Yeah, and the state, the state would take it, if you decided, made your own notes in there, because you were smarter than everybody else, they just throw it out the door. You haven't got the right paperwork, you didn't have anything the right way, see you later.
I see you were talking about standardizing, accommodations or something.
We'll get this over here, sh- we'll show you what they are.
Okay, yeah, that'd be awesome.
Alright, okay.
Roger.
We'll do it this summer sometime.
Okay, yeah.
So what you, you do is you say, we're gonna have fifty five hundred square tons, and then the guy that goes and does it says, no, it was really fifty eight hundred. And he's gonna overcharge you, so then you're not, you, you don't really know how much your bid's gonna, how much it's gonna cost you till it's all done.
Yeah.
And who's gonna figure that, that fifty five hundred dollars or what, uh, five hundred tons beforehand, you know, you're gonna have to hire somebody to figure it. And pay somebody to figure it before you even put out the bids.
No, you, yeah, you all work together, you work, you'll work with the, you get your contractors that are working with you and say, how many ton you think it's gonna take? And they'll tell you, and then you come up with the numbers you wanna use, and then that's the going point, you know, I mean, if all of a sudden two or three streets gonna add it. That's different.
Right.
Yeah, but, everybody's bidding on the same thing, and you take, it's formula, I mean, you, you know, you got sixteen thousand, you add it around Mason Road. It takes this many ton to do that two inches thick.
Right.
And everybody ought to have the same thing, and it's gonna take thirteen hundred ton, it's thirteen hundred ton, not thirteen. You know, it could be thirteen twenty or something like that, but you're somewhere near each other.
Right. It, no, if we wanted to add another road, is that?
But you, you would add, but you would add.
We'd add to that dollar bottom line, yeah, I get that.
The price wouldn't be different, I mean, the tonnage price, yeah, and so do you wanna go to six thousand ton.
Yeah, so mainly what I was getting at with that question is, do, would you guys possibly have the time to do it? Or, you know, with, depending on your schedule.
No, we'd make the time to do it.
Okay, okay, just curious.
For what?
No, no, I mean, for the sake of, I mean, you know, if you had on, I mean, I hate this, if you all of a sudden say, no, we think we're only gonna do instead of fifty six hundred. We think we'll do six hundred and fifteen ton this year.
Yeah.
Then I might say, well, I think you're off a little bit here.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but we'll, you know, we'll work with you.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright.
Alright, now, I will email you tomorrow, is your email address in that, in the bid package?
No, somebody else is it, somebody typed.
Do you want, do you want me to send it to them, or you?
I'll send it to Freddie Aldrich.
Freddie, okay, yeah, I think I dealt with him last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that's on the, uh, wrong, wrong envelope.
Yeah, it's just everybody, Freddie was going over to Halifax for a month tonight, and I said, I'll come up here for you, Freddie, so.
Yeah, I was kinda wondering why you were here.
Appreciate you coming, and, yeah, you did help us to understand.
Yeah.
Well, hell, we'll teach anytime you want, because you, you guys all been around construction.
Not the paving industry, for myself, I haven't.
Swaski and all these tonight, some of the town.
How does people paving is painting all the rock black, free land brown.
Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thanks for coming, Raj, good to see you.
Good night, Roger. So, did Mindy go go?
Yeah, she was done.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good.
That was all she needed, she just wanted you guys to chew on the fireworks thing, at the next meeting she's gonna have a formal presentation.
That's gonna be like a class, whatever, class A or something, that where you need licenses?
Class Z.
Class Z, this is gonna be good.
Yeah.
I know there is a few.
You have no fireworks next year?
For fourth of July, oh, no, for fourth of July this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, I already know who did that.
And.
Isn't that a budget, look, Joe?
Although there's a, yeah, it's, kind of excited to see where she's at, whether I've heard any direct updates.
Now you gotta wait two weeks.
I know, it's driving me nuts. I think I do our callback too, so, maybe that is like, the hook.
We do have Steve and, uh, Peter here for next.
Alright.
Oh, yeah, cool.
Well, early to.
I know, it's not exciting, I love this. Couldn't happen last week.
Fee percentage to transfer station revolving?
Cause we had talked about last week, um, that a hundred percent of the fees that we collect at the transfer station. Carlene is putting it in this revolving fund.
Yeah.
And you guys were, should we put a hundred percent, should we not, should we decide on a percentage, so.
Yeah, so Peter and I talked, and that's where we were, where I dipped my toes into the new software. We looked through the different areas, but, I mean, it was left that we're gonna, we gotta figure out what we're doing with that money.
Yeah, I think that's all kinda, because it's still on holdish until, like, having a greater discussion with Shaw's to see. What, how they're opening, what their fee rates are gonna be, and if it's even worth it for us to operate our own transfer station, or.
Yeah, like, basically, I'm still waiting on them, I, I talked to him just, like, whoa, I think it was like last week.
Yeah, they haven't even opened yet, right, yeah.
Didn't he tell you that he wants to run it for some months?
That's what he said before, like, back in like March or something, February.
Yeah, but you, first time you talk to him.
Yeah.
Get, get the bugs out of it.
My gut tells me we're not closing that transfer station down for two years.
At least for one, yeah.
You know, because not only, even if it makes good business sense, the community is the one who's gonna decide it, and if you just throw it on a ballot. I think there's gonna be a lot of out, outrage.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we would have to have a couple of meetings about it for us and all that, so.
Yeah, that's a big thing.
And, and the biggest thing is, we have to see that it makes sense for us, first of all, before it even goes to the public as well.
Yeah.
If it's like, not gonna work out, we just kill it right there.
Yeah, it'd have to be a good sell.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause the other aspect of the transfer station is, that's where a lot of people.
Complicate.
Talk to each other.
Right.
It's a community hub.
Why don't we put a community center up there? Right in the middle of the grass.
Steep you up for it?
Right, you have everybody pack around.
There is already, it's like that kennel, it's got the can, water pump and everything.
And we took the old civil war fence out of there, that was room.
Yeah, throw table in there and a coffee pot.
What a great idea.
Put it down by my shed.
I mean, that's where everybody goes anyway.
Yeah, but in the meantime, yeah, that, them tons accumulated, Joe sent us that report, and they accumulated fast.
That's cause I'm good.
What's that? So it's been untouched, how long was that?
Twelve months.
It's about twelve months now.
It's like, what was it, about seven, four thousand?
A month now.
Yeah.
So when Peter and I sat down, I was like, well, you know, if this is, used to be used for transfer station expenses. Right, the fees did.
Yeah.
I don't know where it used to go.
And now, if we're not using it, so that is money out of the general fund.
Correct, and not available to us to offset taxes with.
Or, or a regular legal bill, or anything like that, it can't be used, the wording on it is very specific.
Right.
It's tied to the transfer station.
Right, so how much is in there now, four?
Seventy five.
Seventy five thousand?
I think that's the reason.
We can still.
Well, a lot of that's my pay, but rate, but, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
So we can still transfer that money out.
How, no, no, it, it's very specific, it's either used for improvements or operations of the transfer station.
You can pay bills with it instead of paying it out of the general, out, out of the budget.
Yeah.
You know, when we take the money out, I mean, the stuff over to Shaw's, and they charge us to get rid of whatever it is, the metal or the. You know, the cans or whatever it is.
Electronics or batteries or.
We can pay those bills out of that revolving fund instead of paying it out of the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if there's that much money in there now, just don't put any more money in there, you can, because it doesn't say where the money's coming from. And it doesn't say we have to put every penny in there, so.
No, I understand what this says, but with these types of funds, it was my understanding that the selectmen can still go and. It's not, it's like, um, not recommended to do it because it's the type of fund that it is. But we could still use that, um.
Only for transfer station purposes, you can't use it.
Shall not be considered as part of the town's general fund.
No, no, I'm just, I'm going based off of other conversations, and like, when push comes to shove, it's not like the capital reserve accounts. You know, like, it's a different.
You guys have the final say, not the trustees of the trust funds, but you can still only use it for transfer station. You can't use it to offset taxes, and you can't use it to pay anything that doesn't have to do with the transfer station. It has to be only used for, cause it specifically says for that purpose.
Yeah.
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 It, um, military and FA.
Just go back to putting it where we used to put it, or when Peter closes bills, he can do it to the.
Cause we never implemented a funding mechanism for that revolving, it was just assumed that that was what was gonna happen.
I don't know where that came from, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if someone interpreted it, cause I was surprised to see that report that Joe sent us, that was like, whoa.
I know.
But, on, on the other hand, it's good news for the workers at the transfer station.
Needs a lot of work to build the bus all over the edge, literally, the shack I'm in is grounded.
So that's the segue, there is, there is a.
And it's sinking into the ground.
There is some definite improvements that could be done, and this is money that is available.
So do you feel like we should change that at all right now, or?
I think we should change the fees until we know where this transfer station's gonna be in ten years.
Cause, cause whatever's left in that, it, so, say, say that everything goes in the way of closing the transfer station. Whatever's left in that fund, you would have to, like, remember how they did the ministerial fund? Like, you have to close that revolving fund and put that money somewhere.
Too difficult.
Right, so, you don't wanna put too much money in there and then.
Be easy enough to drain, we don't have too much money right now, we have seventy five thousand.
Saying, if you leave it at that and don't put any more money in there, for now, till we find out what's going on, or just put half of it or something. I don't know.
Yeah, they're, they're my options. And, and, and if we wanted to drain it down, we, I think we could, just by paying Shaw's out of it for the rest of the year.
Yeah.
You know, and that would essentially transfer that money back to the general fund.
Right.
Yeah.
Kind of.
Is that where it's coming out of now? Is the general?
It's coming out of, yeah, the budget dollars.
But there are a few items that, you know, they've been asking for a new shack for years.
I'm not offhand recalling what that price was gonna be, or if it was gonna move up top, or.
Yeah, this is, Peter and Steve have talked about it.
They got some quotes.
Yeah.
And that wasn't new quotes, or are them old?
These ones are old ones that I have here right now, but, um, in the process of trying to get more quotes. Um, yeah, yeah, where there's a company I was looking at, uh, for used office trailers. To see if I could get a better pricing than roughly about forty thousand for one, is, over at, um, Mont, Mont Vernon, they got one for about sixteen.
Yeah.
So, I'm not happy with those prices.
Like, are you looking at changing the layout at all, and how cars come in, and traffic, like, along with that scenario?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Put that office trailer like in, on the grass in the middle?
Like, over, yeah, where it'd be close to the power pole that's there.
Pull, so you can get the internet and everything.
And you can see everything.
Yeah, and then it would kind of separate the people when they come in, that they can pull up, take care of what they owe, and then go over to where they gotta dispose of their. Their stuff.
So no usage of that existing building, like that structure that's already there, that all the glass and everything?
One up the top?
Or next to?
No, we're just talking about the little shed one, that's down below.
Okay.
That's the one to replace that.
I see where Sean is going, why aren't we using that big building then?
Cause you can't see down.
Well, if we could, yeah, like, there's, cause some of the, um, flow things that we were talking about was that space for. That initial, like, check person, like, to have that conducted up there, yeah, and then. Maybe still have a smaller shack down below, but not any, you don't need a full on, you know, fifty thousand dollar trailer.
No, no, definitely not.
Yeah, yeah.
Even when I heard about Mont Vernon's being sixteen, I was like, oof, you know, I didn't, I wouldn't really wanna spend that much either.
Especially because we have the building, so what do we do with that building? Right now it's just a whole carriage, what's that?
The topside building on my deck?
Well, that's the bathroom, the only bathroom on the whole facility, or the whole complex is, is in there, which is, like, pretty much a coat closet. And then, um, down below is taking care of the used oil, batteries, light bulbs, electronics. And then the tire trailer is backed into that building, so, um, so that's kind of where we take care of all the separating of the stuff that we get.
I mean, with the little mezzanine there with the office in it.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
And, and what is the hesitation of using that office for a checkpoint? Is there any hesitation for it, or?
I don't see that.
Isn't that what we talked about at one time, that you'd have a preliminary stop, so I pull up, Steve hops out. You got this many yards, this much money, pay Steve, go down, and then the other guys are like, go over here, you go there. Is that what, isn't that what you had?
That was mentioned at the time was, uh, a fear of traffic backup.
Yeah, that's mine.
Onto turn by.
Onto turn by road, because it happened last time we had checkpoint up there, you already want to move checkpoint down.
That would be a reason why you'd want it more centrally located, now, what if you had a credit card machine right there, would that speed it up at all?
It, no, it's, it's not the changing money, it's looking at the bags or anything, the weight and everything else.
I see.
But.
Physically looking at what people have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also.
I, I don't, I wouldn't argue with anything you guys decide, so.
Cause, so, with the bathroom being in that upper building, is there heat that runs already in that upper building as well?
Yeah, yep.
Alright, so it seems like, cause that building, when I look, just, you look in the doors and the windows, like, it seems like, seems like it's primed and ready to be a weigh station. Or whatever, you know, like.
That used to be a checkpoint, I remember that being a checkpoint when I was little, you know, um. I can't, what, was it Paul, Paul? I think his first name was Paul DeRozier, yeah, Paul DeRozier, I think it was, he used to be there. Yeah, I remember you'd sometimes just sit in his backup though, right over there too, and just.
But you would still want a warming hut for the guys who are down.
You need to get out.
Yeah, the wind.
Weather, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the heat as well in the summer, it does get hot.
I don't know if it's a responsibility to tell them not, there's no drinking water available to anyone down there, unless you bring your own.
There's a hand pump. There is, I'm, I'm just kidding, Steve, I'm not, I'm not literally saying that, but just.
I wouldn't.
It amazed me when I went over to it and I pumped it three times, the water came out, I was like, are you kidding me, this thing just works.
I bring, I buy bottles of water and bring it to everybody, and I don't mind doing that, my concern is handling people's trash, your hands get nasty.
Hands.
And you gotta go all the way to topside to wash your hands, and touch river, and I don't wake them up there, cause they're gonna pad knee. But your hands get disgusting and sticky and everything else.
Yeah.
That's why I would like water, even if it's, uh, fifty five gallon barrels. That you can turn it out, water change, something like that.
A rain barrel.
So do you think that you guys could go down there and look at all the existing infrastructure, see how it may be able to work, like, utilized or not utilized? And, cause we were working off of, like, we did a field trip out there already, but if, you know, uh, new director, you know, new head. So it's fine, like, to, yeah, to look at it again, like, if you guys could spend some time together.
Like, would be a.
The trailer he's talking about, the portable office trailer down below, next to the power pole, I think that and setting up the dumpster where he wanted these more to, it was some way.
And you're gonna incorporate water into that trailer too?
It doesn't have to be portable water, I, personally, I, I got two blue fifty five gallon barrels that I'll donate to it. That we can just fill whenever we need to, and just to wash your hands.
Alright, yeah.
Tap on it?
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that, but it sounds like we have running water down. Well, I appreciate that, but it sounds like we have running water down there already is what I'm getting to, so like.
No, you don't even want it where we, where I want it.
Where the bathroom is?
Yeah, that's up to John.
I know, but it can go anywhere, like it's. Yeah, it's already, we already have a well, a well pump.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So this will get, like take a look at everything and come up with a full plan, cause if we're gonna invest in some type of structure. We're, why, what's the sense in having to refill fifty five gallon drums and, you know, work like that?
Cause they do make these office trailers um, with bathrooms in them too, you can get them with a bathroom set up.
So it'd be best, it'd be best to kind of go through all the needs, and then you guys have that discussion. Of what, you know, the list of needs are Steve, and knowing that. You know, at least for myself and it sounds like Jason as well, any existing infrastructure that's down there, we'd like to reuse that and utilize that versus. Get another building and another building and another building, um, cause that's what I felt like, kind of was kind of going towards. Last year too, like instead of just looking at that facility, but if there's reasoning behind it. Not, you know, nothing, anything can be reasoned away or, you know, and discussed. So if we're gonna look at putting some work into it, just remember that we do have running water down there, we have electricity, we have the wifi. Where it's located and come up with a full plan.
Cost of doing the, all that stuff.
Yeah, moving it all to the power pole.
Yeah, I asked you guys too much, you're gonna say, get the hell out of here.
No, but if it's, if, if, if you come up with a plan and it's feasible and then we can.
And I think we can come up with different options, you know, this option is gonna be discussed.
You know, so.
So there was like a sketch that was made and stuff. Just to work off of that, not necessarily see if you wanna tweak it.
Tweak it, not really, not really.
Yeah, I'll drop it one, I got, I got, Peter will throw out that one. The biggest problem is where he had parked the car, where they are now, it blocks the demolition. And it's awkward for the car to get in there.
So the things that need to be worked out, I think that's what Sean's saying.
Yeah, and, cause, cause even though that parking change happened as a fresh, like new thought and idea, didn't work. So what's next, you know, like where are we gonna get, like go with the?
And then the other plan was is to take all the dumpsters and not have any up top and getting them all down below where the others are. And making it so that it's easier to come up to it, you know, I'm, I'm full on with that.
Parking lot and blocking cars.
That would improve that a lot.
Yeah, so get it all on, get it all on paper, yeah, cause that's what we need is a full comprehensive plan with. Options potentially, of like where we could go with things, like what are things that we can have, like? Have input in, like these are things that we need, this is what. You know, your options are, like for those things, you know, like a full plan, it's gonna take a little bit of time to work up, but.
Yeah, and then.
I realize all the, the deficits Steve, like don't preconceive, like have no preconceived notions of. It'll never pass and then just omit it, don't do that.
Yeah, do what you want, do what, what.
I couldn't get anything.
It's gone.
I know it is, you know, but that's where.
And the whole thing is if you have to wait a year or two to improve something that can still, you know, is not on priority one, but is on priority two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the way I view it is an overall plan and you can do step A this year, uh, step B next year. But you already have a plan to work to.
Right, with, with costs.
Yeah, yeah.
If possible.
And the whole thing is, is funding for it is looking better now than it did before too, so that's, that makes a difference.
Don't stop putting money in there yet until we get it fixed, we'll have enough like everything.
Right.
But we don't know if we want everything.
Right, and that's the thing.
Thing, we want, it needs to be prioritized until we understand how long we're gonna be using this station. Right now, in my mind, the priority is the workers there.
Right.
That shed is um, inadequate.
Nine by seven, three people, then you get a truck and they're getting there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be the number one priority in my mind is to get that taken care of.
Um, rattlesome bones, um, we did, we were approached by the. Um, radar control model club last year. About um, setting up and having a, a, an airfield on top of the.
He's been in contact with them, yeah.
And I'm just wondering that, you know, um, it would be good to keep that. Shed with the bathroom up at that location because if they do have people coming in. Um, doing that, they could use the bathroom in that building.
That would be something that would work out if this thing ever came to fruition, yeah, could be a possible item, yeah, to talk about.
Yeah, that building's already there, so that wouldn't be an issue, I am not entering anything down. That building's fully utilized except, except for the small officer, it's the, the bathroom is and the whole dumpster is. Fully utilized, it's not going to waste.
It's the, that big building that's up there.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the one that's got the bathroom.
Right.
So what do you think?
Well, you had said shed.
Feeding the fund?
That's definitely not a shed, alright, I just wanted to make sure you were in there, okay.
Cause how did Joe's quarterly report look on the transfer station?
I guess I'm recorded.
Yeah.
We budgeted a hundred and fifteen and we've spent eighteen. Well, that's not the whole thing, cause then you have landfill.
Right.
We've typically come short, right? Year after year after year.
Supposedly, it's, we lose sixty thousand a year.
Where does that come from?
Know how, I, I don't know where.
Why do people say that?
Yeah, I don't know whether it numbers.
That's because we don't collect that in fees, that's the loss, like instead of it being a zero. Collect all of it, and that's what I was getting to last week was.
Thousand dollars a week, so about fifty two weeks a year.
Yeah.
Sometimes like, last week was killer, we bought in almost fifteen thousand. This is heck, so that's probably that where the sixty came from.
So, I'm thinking.
No, I think you meant, yeah, fifteen hundred.
Oh fifteen hundred, okay.
Yeah, and then, but then it actually costs twenty five hundred, this is just rough numbers, not exact, but.
Yeah.
Like it costs twenty five hundred a week, but we only bring in fifteen hundred a week.
Right.
So that's where that is.
Okay, so the difference between what we collect and what we budget for is, is the loss.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then some of, like, so some of the, the funds that we have been able to, you know, offset taxes with. Was some of that fee money, cause it was going into the general fund, so that was a part of our pool that we had left over, but now. That the, the fees are now being put into the revolving fund, that's another loss and.
Right.
A couple of years ago, or the guys talking about being careful with some of these decisions, that one wasn't the direct decision that this. You know, the board made to do that, but like. Decisions that we're making now are gonna impact us down the line, and this is one of them, so we just suck.
Wanna avoid the word.
Yeah, sixty or seventy thousand that was available in previous years isn't available this year.
It still could be.
Well, unless he, when you turn in the invoice, instead of paying it out of your budget line item, you pay it out of the revolving.
Yeah, and then we have that, um, the fees go back into the general fund, we just, we're not. So for tonight, that'd be a good discussion to have, like what we'd like to do with the fees, you know, that are generated. And since it wasn't really a thought process that had them go into the revolving account, like from this board. I think that that should be paused for now, until we decide what we'd like to do, you know, going forward.
So stop putting the fees in there.
Yeah, well, we have, that's gonna take like a, a vote, yeah.
But, um. I barely was gonna say, I agree with you, uh. I had a thought, it's gone senile, sorry, but I agree with what you're saying. Until we know what we're doing, we don't wanna get the money locked up and we can't use it. I, I could see you stopping, oh, I, I'd like to find out what we cost us a week. To get rid of the stuff, to have Shaw's pull it away, cause these are moving charge and there's a tonnage charge and everything else. So I like, I don't know what those are, or, and then the TVs, take rid of the TVs and tires.
You must have a more comprehensive breakdown, Peter, that they provide, I'd imagine, of. Like what's on their invoicing.
Yeah, 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 they, 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 they show all the charges.
Yep.
Every day or every, you know, weekly, if it is weekly or not, what, you know, whatever the days that they come in.
Yeah.
They, they have it spelled out, yeah, yeah.
Do you make copies of those or put them on a spreadsheet or anything like that, so you can track it or?
Yeah, I'm working on trying to get that onto a spreadsheet, yeah, yeah.
Just curious, be a good tracking mechanism to see how much you're actually spending on that stuff.
Cause I can tell you what, uh, what we take in average yearly, cause I got a database with, I've been in there since I started. Just all the transactions still in there, so I can get anything you want out of it, how much it costs for bags or anything else. How much money we take in every week.
Okay.
And for what, I can give you an average by month or anything you want. But I would, curious to see if, it's costing about the same to get rid of the trash as it did come in. I don't know what it costs to have a dumpster moved.
What's more? Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
So, yeah.
And it obviously flows with how much trash comes in, more trash comes in, it costs more to get rid of it, you know, it fluctuates.
I'm having the garbage and the demolition, I see.
Yeah, I kind of remember a number of four hundred dollars for each truckload that goes out.
There's a tipping fee or?
Yeah, there's a tipping fee. Most are a hundred and fifty, I think there's like one that's like one ten and another one that's like one sixty five. Oh, no, what did I say, one? One fifty five and one sixty five, and it, sometimes it depends on where they bring it. There's some, yeah, if it's further away, then it's a one sixty five. Then there's a price per ton of what's getting rid of, yeah.
So, do you agree with having the fees switch back over to go into the general fund? Are you on that same frame of mind for right now until?
Yeah, yeah.
In that revolving fund, which is a good, you know, chunk of money, and it's not too much where we're gonna get. Like it's gonna impact anything too hard?
Half of this is from last year.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so we really have had a minimal impact.
For this year, yeah, do you want him to pay the fees? Out of the revolving fund for the rest of the year, or do you wanna just keep doing it out of the budget?
Not until we decide if you wanna build, my personal opinion.
Yeah, we don't wanna drain it. So can we say, um. September third is a date to have a full comprehensive plan for the transfer station. Like that gives you guys a few months to get together and really work out some details and maybe even come in to a meeting with questions. Um, like where, where we're at.
Price closer, um, to move dumpsters and different, I don't know if you have to rent those dumpsters or not, or how that works.
Yeah.
Them are the things that would be really nice to have for that comprehensive report, which would require like work on your guys' saying.
I have like, my, my problem is my boss's budget is so tight, he can't afford to let me come in during the day. To do anything.
I think most of the stuff that's down there is Shaw's property, right, as in like compacters, dumpsters.
That, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
So we don't take care of maintenance on it, we don't buy them, anything like that, they, they take care of all that.
That is, we're leasing them or not. As long as they, as long as you're using, they let us, they give us one, as long as they're giving them the trash, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, as far as I know, that's how it is, they take care of it all.
Yeah, we, we don't have, we don't have, to lease it, give them an annual cost to have the dumpster there.
Yeah, as far as I know, no, yeah.
So the dumpsters are free as long as you give, give them the trash.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's just all in with their tipping fee and price per ton.
That you have at your house, they don't charge you for it unless you.
Yeah, cause there's, so there's quite a bit to look at, um, I think that's why we didn't get that far into it, you know, like before. Uh, but now, sounds like you guys, like four months should be enough to. To work on that, and like I said, please do come back in with questions and things, um. And then even if you wanna take a walk out there, um, ahead of that.
Drone out there and get some arrow shots.
Wow, there you go.
That works too, however you wanna do it, um, but it'd be, you know, good to hear, you know, like what the plan forward is, I guess. I'd like to make a decade long decision, um, and not just like a Band-Aid, like another Band-Aid.
I'll be too old to work there in seventy and ten years.
Yeah, you gotta find out.
More likely than not.
You think so?
Yeah.
Possibly. Thought just occurred to me, we may someday, uh, put it up for bid with the local trash haulers, cause. It's just a transit.
Yeah, I mean, we really can't sell.
There and say.
Now, the other option is we can look and see what Rynch has going on with theirs, where they take care of all their trash themselves, as in.
Do they?
They truck it all to M, MDS, Jeffrey. And get rid of it.
People who live on that side of town can.
Another for employees' job on the DPW to go and take the roll off and empty all the trash. You know, once a week.
But if it's, if it makes sense, then it makes sense.
So, you know, there's, you know, there would be dumpsters and trucks and, or truck, you know, that would be involved with that.
Structures, so, yeah. Seven years, like it just didn't, but that wasn't on the board or.
When I first started, it'd be, uh, older Peter, he had said he had looked into it, he could get a used truck. That would be paid for itself in one year with the charges, I don't know if that still how prices are now, but.
Yeah, you guys can look at it.
Said it was feasible because. All the tipping charges and hauling charges.
So what I'm thinking is I should be able to get some kind of numbers from, possibly from Rynch, you know.
Be interesting.
Cool, uh, so make a motion to have all the fees collected, um, at the transfer station to go into the, uh, general fund. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
As, yeah, it should be, I guess it's common sense, but as of today.
Yeah.
Yeah. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
No, I did that last week.
So you went aye and they're abstained?
I, every other week, yeah.
But in, and in the meantime, I think pursuing that, um, trailer. Or shelter of some kind.
Yeah, there's, there's other options besides.
Trailers are, uh, to me, I thought were good because if you do close it someday, you can move it to something else and still use it.
Yeah.
So I, what I'm saying is I don't think we should wait till September.
No.
Love that.
Something and get it, even if we don't have the bathroom hooked up.
Yeah.
Or just, just to, um.
Just get power to it.
Yeah, and into power, internet, water.
And a lot of them come with the heat and AC, you know, units attached, you know, that would be good for the workers that are there.
You could just get, get a.
Check municipal too.
Yeah, that's.
Municipal had a, municipal had a sweet drone and a going rate, I think I sent somebody an email about it.
Who wants a drone?
Talking about the drone.
Oh, that was the assessors, wasn't it?
To look at that fifteen acres.
I said to you, I think you and Bob Boynton, one of yous and Bob Boynton, cause they had, and the, the highest bid was only eighteen hundred dollars and it's like a ten thousand dollar drone.
I don't think the town needs a drone.
I'm just saying.
So am I.
Wow, that was a big zing.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, cool.
Oh, just to note that September third is my birthday.
Oh, well, you know what, you can be here until nine.
We can be expecting.
On your birthday.
The precedent has been set, Peter.
The precedent has been set, yeah.
Treat birthdays.
Yeah.
I guess so.
What a pleasure to see you.
Oh, Mr. Coffee.
Well, I wouldn't say that, I know, I know, it's a pleasure to see you gentlemen, but I mean. It's a pleasure to see you, I just had to hear what you have to say.
It is Zing City tonight.
Yeah, in just one second. Yeah, in just one second, Jim.
Yeah, I apologize.
So we had the transfer station aluminum-plastic separate compactors, what's that?
Do you do aluminum cans?
Okay.
That was, that was changing.
If you could separate the aluminum, you can go ahead and and uh.
Aluminum is, we can get more money for if we keep it, crush it down and give them back aluminum cans, we get so many cans.
Yep.
Either be, and we get once a year, compress it down and get it once a year, that's valuable.
And you get, you get what?
You can get money for that.
Forty or sixty cents a pound.
Yeah.
You can sort them out and take them over to Massachusetts and get a nickel a can.
That's illegal, that's illegal.
No, it's not, it's legal.
No, it's illegal.
It has to say five cents on the can.
Well, it has to say five cents on the can, so you have to sort the cans out, but if it says five cents in a given state, it's legal. I checked with the A G's office years ago when we did it.
It's illegal, cause I looked it up.
Alright, we're gonna move past that, cause we're talking about crushing them or just getting uh poundages, so let's stay out of that arena.
But we're gonna have to come up with.
Where did you want that discussion to go?
Well, I just think, I just brought it up, it was um.
If we can get money for it.
Seems like a common sense thing, and I don't understand, I guess I didn't understand why you would mix aluminum and plastic. And what really brought it to a head was when I read a news article saying only five percent of plastic is recycled. So what are they doing with this, are they just throwing it all into a dumpster, I didn't know.
Yeah.
And I think it.
Maybe they put it all together, cause all the aluminum's coated with. Plastic anyways.
But you can still, you you can extract that aluminum.
Into the ocean and goes back to the west coast.
That's the recycling plant.
That's a recycling plant.
So you just have to see what that cost is, you have to see like what the cost is.
Yeah.
We're paying currently and then what a additional compactor would be if we needed one or would we keep it all and then load it in?
Well, I'm wondering if it, why do we separate out the plastics if only five percent of them get recycled?
Throw it in household waste.
Put it in household is what I said, now, maybe people need more than a news article, but.
They're, they're doing, that's because Shaw's is doing, when they take it, they're doing something with the plastic.
But.
But they got a little bit mixed in with it.
Point is, is Shaw's is doing it, so the homeowner's doing it, Shaw's is doing it, the transfer station's doing it. It's going in separate trucks, but where does it end up? And that article said it's ending up in landfills or incinerators.
Can we ask Shaw? What they do, when they take it out of here? How do, how do, how do they deal with it, like would they prefer we separate the aluminum, throw the plastic in with the household trash or what?
Mm-hmm. It's even right now, so the way it's set up is that. The plastic is separate, so people don't pay for it. And then they pay for the other trash, like the household trash, so it reduces how much is in people's bags. You know, so there's that benefit there for.
I thought you were paying the demo. Oh, no, you're paying for the bags.
Is this one of the things that we're subsidizing?
It might be like one of those subsidizing points and where we.
But I mean, as a town, yeah.
That's a part, I'm sure that that contributes to that loss.
Right.
You know, cause we're not getting that like the same.
You have no money for plastic.
You get no money for plastic.
And we're not checking, so we're paying to get rid of plastic, it sounds to me like we're also paying to get rid of aluminum, which we shouldn't be.
Right, we should get, we should be getting money.
If it's working is fantastic, it's a, it should be a win-win for everybody.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, that should go actually for anything that goes into the metal container also.
I was gonna say.
And then steel is, you know, it's a couple cents per hundred pounds or something like that. But um, but you know, other types of metal like the lead uh going in there or.
So we have one here, it's a mixed metal.
And that's what it is at the transfer station.
Why can't you throw the aluminum cans in there?
But you get way less money.
Mm-hmm. You what?
Yeah, but I mean, if you go ahead and isolate those.
Because Shaw's will take it and then divide it themselves.
Right, and then they get the big bucks.
Yeah.
They'll take it over and scrap it.
Or, you know, yeah, and that's what they're doing with the light iron and the heavy iron that's in there.
So you pay to get rid of it.
But they are paying us now where before they didn't.
Okay.
Carleen has been seeing that they give it, they cut a check on that when they empty it.
Good.
So those prices must be up.
Before we did it, so, that's been another.
What are they, I wonder what we're getting in time.
So you are gonna talk to Shaw's about.
So it, it would be curious to compare, cause you have another company doing your metals here. Right?
Yeah.
Mill metals.
Mill metals, yeah.
So it'd be curious to compare though, see if we should. Or at least talk with Shaw's.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Hmm.
Yeah, so I don't know if we really take action, it's more of a point of interest.
Yeah.
Look into the pricing and expenses.
Kinda goes into this whole big plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
There you go.
Well, that metals for more that Shaw's has is, you know, they'll, they'll take the aluminum and and give you whatever for it. Same with lead if you.
If you separate it out, yeah.
And if you have titanium, that's even bigger bucks.
And break rotas are.
And that gets recycled into uh uh replacement needs. I know.
Alright.
So if anyone wants to bring titanium?
Moving on for you.
Yeah, great, get some more joints. Mister Coffee, we'll take a break in the action for you, did you come in to speak up, speak with us about anything?
Yeah, I, I just have a question.
Okay.
You don't have to answer, but I just wanna ask the question and then I'm done with the whole subject permanently, okay, you know where it is?
No.
No.
Yeah, it's where you're thinking.
You have, you have a few subjects.
Here, here's, here's, well, it's a, it's a kind of a statement and I'm looking for your response. On December fifth, I came in here with Tim Summer. And we asked about. Four forty-five. And you said that, the board said that they would discuss it at some point and get back to us, well, you did discuss it the same night. If we, had we known, we would've stayed and listened to your discussion. So, we have, so this is a cover letter you sent me, okay? So when I get down here, I get to the minutes, it, it shows where we came in and talked about it. Um. Although I don't see Tim's name up on here, but I think he was here, anyway. We get down to. Minimum impact home occupations. Okay, so you state that as a registered trucking business with the state of New Hampshire, okay? Okay. Jason Summer, motions, and this is the core of my vehicle. Motions not to issue a cease and desist or stop worker order for four forty-five turnpike road. Based on minimal impact home occupation, section M of the New East Ridge zoning ordinance. New Alvarez, second, the motion passes unanimously. Well. Has anybody read the minimal impact ordinance, I got it right here. There's no way that this thing complies. With the rationale for passing what you did, it, it's just, you know, I'm just gonna suggest you read it. Uh. And uh, it's right here. The activity should be carried out only by the residents of the premises, so you can't have any employee there. The activity should be operated in high within a dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling structure, it's accessory structure. There should be no external evidence of the activity except for a non-illuminated sign. There should be no adverse effect of the activity on the environment or surrounding properties as a result of, and then there's a long, a long list. There should be no increase in traffic or parking in the neighborhood.
Which one of them's do you feel are not? Being met?
Probably most of them.
And I, I look at it that they're all being met.
Well, I, you're the one that made the motion, but did the other, the other two selectmen, did you read the motion or read the uh?
I, I remember it, just as you read it right there.
Well, you have impact on surrounding properties.
The business has?
People that live in the surrounding.
The business has impacted, how?
I, I, all I'm saying is, how, that's what I'm asking for, is. How do you qualify that as minimal impact and, and did the other two selectmen, because you're the one that brought it up? Did they have knowledge of that part of the ordinance and did they, have they read it?
It was one of the other selectmen who handed it to me, that ordinance.
I have no idea, because you guys waited for us to leave and then you discussed it. Was, we have no idea what, how you discussed it other than the minutes.
But we did go through that. And I don't see where this trucking company would not fall into any of them categories. He doesn't even have a sign.
I know we don't have a sign.
I understand, you know, his, he doesn't have um. An accessory dwelling you, building or an office building, it's his residence. Um, he trucks, from what we see, he has generally one truck and it's gone most.
This, this thing really calls for a business that's inside a building, it doesn't call for. A trucking company that parks its trucks out in the yard, okay? I, I just don't see how you can, you can say that it's minimal impact with a guy hauling snow across the state of Iowa.
What do you mean? Actually, there's nothing illegal about that, cause I was going through the um. Uh, the RSA's. And believe it or not, um, he can, as long as he doesn't leave any snow. Over there uh on the, the road itself, cause it's a state road. Um, and except for using it for um enough to, if somebody is taking their cart. Or a snowmobile across the road, uh that is allowed.
Well, you see it all the time in Jaffrey with the horses.
But it basically says that um. Uh, that the uh. The snow can be pushed to either side of the road uh for uh on the abutting property. And that's in the RSA. And I just looked that up within the last couple of weeks.
Well, according to district four, if you change the use of a property, you have to get a different driveway permit. Or your subject will get a different driveway permit.
And I'm sorry, what was that again, what was the, what do you say?
According to the gentleman I spoke to at district four last year. If you change the use. Of a property, you go from residential, now you've got a commercial use on the property, and you have state access.
Well, you know.
You have, you have to redo the permit, even if the permit goes back to seventeen hundred.
Okay, the um. Uh, the, the thing there is that we have a lot of contractors. Um, in this town. Who use a truck as part of their uh, um, you know, of their work. And what would be the difference between that and what he's doing over there? That's where I had a problem trying to uh to do it, the, and it was actually.
Tractor trailer in and out, in and out of that property.
Yeah, and.
It's tricky and it's dangerous, because you're facing the wrong direction of traffic when you're backing in. And coming off the highway, you, you just, you know, if I got a dump truck and I park it in my yard, I'm probably going straight in and straight out. Okay? And I'm not on a busy road, I'm not gonna, I, I didn't come here to get into it, I just don't see how you could say that this is a minimal impact. Operation, I just don't see how it makes any sense, that's the only reason I came here, I didn't come here to discuss it anymore than just. Throwing that out, I'm done.
Okay, yeah, so to answer your questions, all three of us were and are aware of that. Um. And made our decisions based off of that.
I think sometimes it's better for me to keep my mouth shut, I think I will keep my mouth shut at this point about what I think of the decision. Nothing personal. I don't think it's personal.
I agree.
Okay.
Alright.
I'll see you tomorrow, Benty's got us all meeting here.
I posted it for you.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, Jimmy.
Good night, sir.
Don't forget your cane.
Uh, I only need it sometimes.
Okay. Take care.
Alright. So, moving down our roundtable list. As a reminder, the fishing derby is May eighteenth at Central Cemetery Pond. Then we'll have our Memorial Day Parade um on May nineteenth. Uh, the morning parade kicks off at nine thirty in Smithville Cemetery. And then we'll be um taking a break after that and reconvening at the Congressional Church for twelve thirty. Uh, for the afternoon parade.
Unfortunately, I will not be able to make that weekend.
Okay.
What? You already committed.
Huh?
You already committed.
I did until I got a job and I've got a two-week project. I did.
Well, that's good, I'll keep you occupied.
I'm working for Dartmouth Health Group.
On Memorial Day weekend.
No, where are the week before?
Oh, yeah, where the.
We're doing, we're doing an upgrade in patient monitoring systems.
Well, we'll have to find another speaker.
And that's gonna be. At least two weeks worth of work.
Hmm, so I can bring that up to the meeting tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What meeting is tomorrow?
Patriotic purposes committee.
Yeah. And then we had uh some information regarding the quiet title for the antique fire brigade building.
Yeah.
And costs associated.
Yeah, so you guys had asked uh how much it would cost to do that, to get that quiet title. And she said anywhere between five thousand and fifteen thousand dollars depending on how many respondents they had. Which. I don't know what the answer would be, I don't know if any of those people are still alive or their heirs or if anybody would care or.
Mm-hmm.
Any of that, so, anywhere between five and fifteen thousand dollars was the response from the attorney.
That sounds like it'll have to be budgeted for next year if that's what we'd like to do.
You think so?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, according to, you know, the recap from quarter one that we heard and some of the other things, I'm kinda. I think we're gonna be kinda tight, um. Tighten things right up this year, so.
But I thought that building was kinda falling apart.
Yeah, it might not last another couple of years, that's all right, then we won't have to sell it, we have to sell the land.
Yeah.
And we'll have some crushed metal we can turn in over to.
There you go.
No, you guys can't get rid of that whole firing, it's gonna be fixed up.
No, they're gone, they're out of there.
Okay.
Did they, oh, are they?
I don't, when did they do that, cause last night I know they tarp'd it.
Oh, I thought they took them out there like a month ago.
Yeah, I thought I'd heard that the, I haven't double-checked, but I thought, yeah.
But I thought I heard that were.
Yeah, I thought this one would make it out.
Okay.
They're right.
I think.
No scrap, no scrap metal for them firing.
For what, choosing? I won't accept it in my transfer speech. I'd have to agree, we gotta just put it off if we wanna do it. I mean, if, if we get towards the end of the year and it's looking like some of these lawsuits have settled.
And we can use that as part of like some illegal budget or.
This is what I'm wondering, or at least be able to seriously look at it enough to put it on the um warrant article? Put it as a warrant article to sell that land.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, is that how we go about it? We did that with, we did that with the um. What you call it, prime roof and his property there, remember that, it went on a warrant art.
Yeah, the little slippery.
To get authorized. So I think you had sent us something saying we're authorized to sell whatever we want.
You are, sell and buy.
But do we want to is.
Yeah.
Right, well, the to- the town voted to give the Board of Selectmen authority to buy and sell. Property that is in the best interest of the town.
So, I'd say a public hearing, certainly.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, I would definitely do that. Yeah.
Definitely not on the table for today.
No, no.
Okay.
And if the uh. The what you said's moved out, maybe we can take the tarp that was on it and put it on top of the building.
That gives people flash.
What's going on over there?
Wow, the roof is leaking.
Yeah.
But we haven't maintained that building.
Can we put a tarp over it?
That's no chance.
Yeah, we could, we could, we certainly could, I think it'd probably be best at this point, cause it sounds like it's gonna be. Moving down the line a little bit, so.
Did Mark take a look at that building?
Mark, why you crawling up there?
Well, just, but I have a net under him.
Well, just to check it out, see if there's anything we can do to stop. Real cheap fix, we don't wanna tarp downtown.
Hmm.
Yeah.
That'll bring some attention to it.
You can get a camo tarp.
Yeah.
I think it already gets it down.
Make it a brown tarp and blend it with everything else.
Camo tarp.
Or a gray tarp.
I don't think anybody looks at it anymore, cause that clock looks so good.
I know, right, yeah. Oh, I was speaking of which, oh, I'm not up yet, okay.
Anyways, yeah, that might be something, I think it's been all week.
Get it all, so it's cool stuff down there.
Uh, we, we hadn't talked for a long time, it's like, whoa. Uh, we just, but it's good, cause we both gotta work.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're gonna kick that can down the road, come back to it in a little bit.
Done it in the most efficient manner, kicking the can down. Thomas Jefferson would approve. He would, he said he does not think a very active government is ever in the best interest of the people. It should move slow, so we take our lead from our founding father.
There we go.
Yep.
So, do you have anything for roundtable?
I do.
What do you got?
Um, yep, I just thought of it and forgot it.
You know, I kinda went down your list for you.
Yeah, yeah, I kinda put everything.
And I left the two things that, cause I have your written list right here, see if you can remember it.
Uh, yeah, um, Chief Abel had sent an email about um, hiring a. Potential officer and also he just wanted you guys' approval for the longevity that were already approved in the budget, so. But I guess he just wants you to initial it. So, I'm not sure.
What does that mean?
And.
I thought.
You don't need longevity for a new hire, do you?
No, not for the new hire, there's two separate issues, one is an email, one is an email about the new hire.
No, there's a mix of uh, that.
Oh, it's two separate issues.
That they've passed all the tests and all that and they want, they're gonna sign him up for the academy. That's one sit, one issue. And then the other issue is, um, the selectmen had approved the longevity bonuses. For retention.
It's about the new hire.
Um, for the existing officers. And they're getting all that, so we just wanted to. Have you guys initial it. Oh, don't forget, I'm gonna be gone uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week to Portsmouth, to the Parmax Conference, so I won't be. In the office, I will however have my laptop with me and my phone, which I get my email.
And I'm just asking, while these guys are looking at those papers, Peter and Steve, do you guys have anything else that you wanted to discuss that you came in for, so we don't miss it?
Hmm, no, no, I think, no.
And Joe?
No, nothing yet.
Okay.
Well, there was one thing we talked about on the phone, and that was, do you guys think it would be appropriate to use? Some of that money that's in that revolving fund for um, building maintenance? Or should we?
I'm not sure, I'm putting my money, putting my money in here.
No, just for the transfer station, because Peter brought up how there was some roof.
The train.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good.
The one over the dumpster?
No, this one's on the building where we have our loader's storage over there. And then it, um, down the other side has got two big um, garage doors. And the other side was uh, where we used to so, uh, store our salt back when we had not very much storage for salt. So, um, but it's on the side that where the loader is parked, it's got some um, missing shingles, so I had Mark fix it. But in the process, he discovered that the plywood is rotted out in that area of where that missing shingle was, so it's been leaking water. So, it looks like. I don't know, anywhere's for maybe a sheet and a half to three sheets or two sheets or whatever apply would, would be needed to fix that.
And how's the whole roof, how's the whole roof?
It's in good shape, yeah, yeah, it's just that, that area, because it, yeah, something happened where.
Yeah.
When we got, when I actually uh, had, Mark was like, hey, I can take some of those trees down around that, it's like, oh, sweet, yeah. So, he took some trees down and then that's made it real visible, you know, so it's like, oh, that ain't good, get that fixed, so.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, if you go up to it, you kinda see where it's like, yup, there's a, you know, a truss here, a truss here, and it's weighty.
Yeah.
Through there, so.
Was it, was there enough? Material to hold the shingles on?
The rafters?
Yeah.
Apply, like.
Yeah, it's, 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 everything's there, you know, it's holding there, but it's definitely.
So, that probably should wait until a re-roof, right? I mean, the route wouldn't necessarily spread if it's not getting more water, would it?
Well, you know.
But you said it's leaking already, right?
With the roofs.
Well, he fixed it now.
Depending on how far gone it is, like the dry rot actually, those start disintegrating, like once it dries out more and, yeah.
So, that was a question that we both were like, oh, wow, I mean, our building maintenance fund is pretty tight. Would it be appropriate to use, would that be considered an improvement?
From what you read, it sounded like it.
Yeah, that is transfer station.
Yeah. Yeah.
As you already parked the bucket truck, I need to compress the demolition.
Yeah.
So, it's definitely a transfer station.
Then it would give us.
And, and it's nice to have that storage there for the, you know, especially for the loader, cause they have to keep it out of the weather.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, so get some prices for that. Cause I think it sounds like anything up on a roof is more than anything that we should be tackling ourselves. It's definitely hired out.
I mean, Mark already went up there and reshingled it.
It's different than running a sheet of plywood.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's only a little area, you know, yeah, that wasn't real big, big.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like that would be the way to code that, so, get some votes for that.
Yeah.
Yep.
The re-roofing should come out of there too. Get the money in there after you re.
Right.
If it needs to be, yeah.
Yeah.
Should we just shuffle that paper away?
I, I do do that.
Yes, I know, keep an eye on you now.
I added a rectangulation on it too.
Um, so you guys oppose uh, to the new hire? We haven't gotten into um, doing our own type of interview or anything, like with any of the past hires, you know, just approved it based off of, yeah.
You know, of any one. Off of the department heads.
Department has recommendation.
I think they should add that leeway to build their department how they see fit.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I agree.
So, all those in favor in authorizing um, Mike's recommendation for uh, Police Officer Benjamin Davy?
Aye.
Aye.
Is, is that a motion or is that just a vote?
No, no, just a, yeah, cause we, we don't need that, yeah, we all agree, this is the clarity of yeses.
Okay. Okay, just making sure.
While we're there, um, may I bring up a topic?
Sure.
We discussed last week about um, the budget for um, for the chief to uh, work some extra shifts.
That was in non-public, though.
Okay. Well, we turned it down, didn't we?
There you go, unsealed.
What did, yeah, alright, so we'll pause on that. Um, and then the longevity stipends. Um, those are in there?
Yeah, they're budgeted.
Okay, it is.
Took a little time, a little hard to reconcile in the numbers, but we did it right.
Okay.
I'm just curious with the new hires, or any new hire, would they get that same?
No. No, until.
Oh, so what it is?
Well, yeah, once they have.
So, once they have one, like a year under, under their belt, up to five years, it's uh, thirteen hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Once they have one.
Yeah, right.
Six to ten years is fifteen hundred and fifty dollars a year, eleven to fifteen years is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. And sixteen to twenty years um, of service or greater is two thousand dollars a year.
New employees will be covered by that.
Yeah, after they complete a year, yeah.
Where after they meet requirements, you get their training and their official.
And they have to work for, they have to work for, they have to work for a year, Steve, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it admin as well as officers or just officers?
I don't believe it's the admin.
So, the admin is eligible for the fitness, but it is eligible for the longevity, but uh, we don't have it admin as many every year, yeah, so.
I feel like. Right, no, I knew that, I just didn't know if it was.
Longevity, yes.
Thought it was to keep officers, you know?
Yeah.
Initiate a budget anyway.
Yeah.
So, anybody have any disagreement with the other payouts of the longevity bonuses?
No, I'm glad to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Happy, happy to, happy to give them a bonus for sticking with us another year.
Yeah, and it looks like you'd like to have that done annually at the beginning of May, so we'll look to, you know, seeing this information again next year. Yeah. Alright, so it's all in the affirmative for longevity bonus dispersment as well.
Got it.
Alright. Anything else?
Yeah, but I don't remember what it was, so. Must've been a lie.
That was a smile when you were saying that.
Oh, not important.
Not important, it's so very important.
Well, if it's important, I'll email you, I can, I can't think of what.
Oh. Can we please come up with a date for our next lunch or breakfast?
Oh, right, well, that was actually Jason who suggested that, wasn't me?
That's what it was.
Okay.
I wanna know if I can get new boots there.
You ordered them.
Oh, I, I got them, I learned them, but these holes in them now, I've been working with them. Steel toes right there.
Yeah, so you, doesn't he get new boots?
Yeah, I, I don't know if you get one set of boots a year or whatever, but.
Yeah, it hasn't been a year.
One, one set a year.
Even not a year old.
Then you should call that company and say, listen. Give me new boots.
You spent big bucks on these.
No, seriously, they, I mean, you wear them once a week, or do you wear them every day?
I wear them every day.
Oh, wow, we only pay for them at the transfer station.
That is true, yeah, I'm actually, I would ask them what.
I would still call them though.
Where were we talking about, lunch or breakfast?
Lunch, definitely.
Which one are we doing?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Steve, Peter, if you, I don't mind the boot conversation, but if you guys wanna, yeah, cool.
Sorry. Yeah, we take that right out here.
Hey, thanks.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thanks, guys, thanks.
Yeah, good night.
Good night, good night.
Good night.
Yeah, um, yeah, so we're gonna do a lunch or breakfast.
I like the breakfast.
Yeah.
I think we got a lot of positive feedback on it.
Alright, I could go for a breakfast too.
Then we'll have to be out in the hot sun.
Yeah, yeah.
And the people came a lot more staggered.
They can still go to work after too.
And there's the other boys too.
Instead of blowing a whole day, yeah, even though the lunches were nice, cause I felt like we got a pretty good crowd for lunch.
I want a long day for the employees, nah.
Everyone take your PTO and put it in the hat and pay the.
No, Steve forgot it's a long one.
Did I cross a line there?
It's funny, it's funny, we're, we're all, we're all snarky tonight, so it's all good.
I think, I like the breakfast.
Yeah, so we can do a breakfast and a lunch, that's fine.
Well, we can call it brunch, starting at six in the morning.
Brunch.
Let's just provide meals all day long.
Should we do that every day?
Yeah, no, breakfast. I'm trying to think, any morning of the week is the same to me.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah, Luke, was it, I know you got your, like the work.
I've got my work.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna.
That's just for the next two weeks.
Well, absolutely, two weeks.
I'm not gonna be able to make it.
Well, it depends on where it is, they're.
We're doing it in June.
They're putting, they're putting together a job offer for me, if they want me full time.
That's excellent.
You're gonna work full time?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, sure.
Hope to keep you young anyways, you know, you can imagine stopping, stopping working, so it's good.
I know, right?
How much younger do I have to be?
Well, you can tell them, you can tell them you have a previous engagement on a certain date that.
I think that if I got.
Sunday.
Hired one day and say I need tomorrow off, it's going.
Well, if you tell them ahead of time.
Oh, it's fine, Debbie.
I'm joking.
I know, yeah, but that, you're badgering now, it's not snarky.
I'm being snarky. Time for a cigarette.
What we need is a date.
Yep.
June?
Uh.
We're gonna do a nice cool morning.
Cool morning, yeah, like, yeah, I like May.
You like it? May?
Yeah.
When did you say, oh, you're just gone a couple of days.
Yeah, the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, let's, let's do it on the fourteenth.
That's coming around.
Just kidding, that's next week.
What, next Tuesday?
Yeah, cause I said I wasn't gonna be here, go ahead, you can do that, I didn't get a birthday cake. And I don't get to be here for employee appreciation. It's cause they're getting me a car.
Cause you're on a field trip.
Cause they're getting me a car.
All expenses being.
A Cadillac.
No, we sold your car.
We're gonna start wrapping this meeting up here.
I know, let's go, sorry.
What are you talking about?
We're all tired.
What is it, today's the seventh?
Oh, the next Friday, oh, actually, nobody works on Friday, so, yeah, then the twentieth.
That would be easy.
It comes to work on your day off for breakfast.
Uh. Want to do the twentieth?
Monday's always good, like kickoff of the week, you know?
Yeah, start the week off good, yeah.
That would fall into what we always do, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, so May twentieth, employee appreci- and volunteer appreciation breakfast.
Monday. Twentieth, yeah, I'll send out a big email.
From five thirty to seven thirty.
Yeah, thirty, seven thirty?
Well, you gotta be to work for eight, no?
What time?
Five thirty in the morning?
Sean can pull that shift, me and Lou will come at seven thirty.
Yeah, right?
So, what time?
What did we do last time?
Cause I know Luke was able to get it, cause it was early, we did it pretty early last.
Six thirty, I think.
If it's May twenty.
Cause the DPW starts.
I will, I will be here for that.
You will?
No, seriously.
You're abstaining?
He doesn't wanna get out of the car, that's alright.
Abstaining from the event.
Six thirty? I don't think it's kind of early.
Yeah, I wanna go six thirty to nine or something.
And we stand out on the handicap ramp and flip legs.
Yeah.
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 That was great.
Six thirty to nine.
Coffee inside.
Office opens at nine, so. Then we put down our spatulas and pick up the bullwhips and tell them to get to work.
And get to work.
Right, exactly.
Not a minute late.
May twentieth, alright.
Alright.
How does that sound, Debbie, does it sound alright, like till nine, or do you think it's, do you think it should go till ten?
Sure. Sounds awesome.
So, it could be during some working hours? Hold on, it's, it's serious, I don't know.
Make it ten, I'm not gonna be there anyway.
Nine?
Whatever, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, we'll leave the coffee pot running.
Okay.
Alright.
Cool, six thirty to nine?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And then, uh, is there anything else on your old new business?
No.
Alright, Jason? Luke?
I'd like to go into a non-public session.
Alright, okay. Before we do that, we're gonna talk about a couple, like a couple other things in the correspondence folder.
Okay.
Um. So, the fire department has made a recommendation, actually. Was it Meredith, cause she's our fire warden and is recommending Matt Hatcher to be her deputy.
Wait. I thought Gary was the fire warden.[1752.04]
No, he's the fire chief.
No, I thought.
We, we um we had spoken about it and said that if they had wanted to make a change, they could, and I I guess that they had decided not to last year.
Alright.
Mm-hmm, oh.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I missed that one, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, cause I thought the same thing too, but uh all we did was just say that you could, like whatever you guys wanna do, and uh go back at it. So do you have any concerns with Matt Hatcher uh being appointed to deputy fire warden for the state? Luke?
Uh, I'm for it.
Okay, alright. Alright, and then uh it's for non-public. Does it have to do with personnel?
Yes.
Yeah, if she.
And I would like Joe to remain here.
What?
Hmm, so take a, take a, I don't know what the context is, so take a look at these and make a decision on.
He's not first.
I would say um A.
Alright, make a motion to go into non-public session under ninety-one, eight, three, two, A.